All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mashpee Public Schools Committee Business Meeting of October 18th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and our, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who live here and have been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Moving on to our next item is to ratify the agenda of October 18th, and that agenda consists of public comment, presentation of the Mashpee Middle High School Boys Hockey Camp in Tilton, New Hampshire, 12-1 through 12-3, 23, as well as an item on head coach Chris Peterson. We have a presentation from our Coombe School students, approval of minutes from the September 20th, 2023 meeting. We have representative of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Education Department here tonight. Yes, there's Talia. We have Ms. Victoria Hare, who is here to follow up on public comment from her, from her public comment at our September 20th meeting. We have our share out from our Student Advisory Committee representative, Andrew Kelly. Then we have the report of the superintendent, our report from the Director of Finance, reports from the subcommittees and working groups that have met since our last meeting, and then specifically unassigned unfinished, unfinished business, items the chair did not reasonably know in advance, our second public comment section, and then, once we get through all of that, we will be done for the night. So, we've got kind of a hefty agenda tonight, so I will entertain a motion to ratify the agenda.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Brian? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And I also am a yes. Okay, do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Stephen Barron.
Okay. So, just a reminder, public comment, it is a three-minute time limit, since we only have one person, if you could just state your name and just, if you want to share your address, that's just so we know, but I'm gonna set my timer and let you know.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Barron. I'm a resident of the town for 20 years in Mashpee. I have two children in the school system, a sophomore, Michael, and a seventh grader, Nicholas, and I'm here to talk this evening about the basketball program for the high Calling with regards to the second year in a row that the basketball program is looking for a head coach so late towards the season. And my concerns with this are, last year there was a committee, and I'm gonna use that word probably a few times, to select a coach. There was a hiring interview process. My son was a freshman at that time, and he was part of that committee. Thrilled to death to be asked to perform in that aspect as a freshman, and, you know, obviously get some real-life lessons. The committee recommended unanimously, unanimously, a coach that had previous coaching experience here prior, in Coach Bo Reese, to be offered the coaching position. Shortly thereafter, their recommendation went up, the posting went back on the superintendent's Twitter account. I, at that point, sent her an email questioning why, after going through this process, we're in that situation. And she just basically stated it was ongoing. That's fine. Coach Bo Reese was eventually hired as the coach. I just want to give a quick background on him. He was the coach of the basketball team a few years back, brought them to the highest level of achievement in school history. They were in the state semifinals, playing at the Boston Garden, one went away from becoming, or competing for the state championship. In his six years as coach of the high school program, he was South Shore League Coach of the Year three times, 50%. This past year was, was a challenging year for him, new kids, new program, basically, but he did really well. The kids were very excited at the end of the season with the progress that they made. They looked really forward to playing for him this year. This summer, my son played in the Cape Cod, Cape Cod High School Summer Basketball League. Mr. Trevary was the coach of the team. However, Coach Bo Reese was at the, every single game during the summer, eight or nine weeks, I think, and every week he was there, rooting on his kids and talking to them afterwards. September 5th came, we had all-sports night at the school, and my wife Karen saw Coach Bo Reese there. She was talking about upcoming fundraising events, things of that nature. On October 7th, the team received a text from the coach stating that he was not being brought back to coach the team.
If you have, that's the three minutes, unfortunately. If you want to send an email to the school committee, we'll gladly take...
Can I make one, one comment on that?
Very quickly, because that was the three-minute limit.
So, my son sent a email to the school committee.
We received emails, yes.
You received it, but did not respond.
Unfortunately, I've had a very busy week. I apologize for that.
Nobody responded. They got zero responses. So, my question being is that, we have these committees, these students put together an email directed at you folks about their concerns about this position, and nobody gets back to them. That's...
Typically, we don't comment, but I will comment on this, that that falls on me, and I apologize to all of the team for not responding and accepting receipt of that email. I did have a slightly busy week this week.
That's fine.
And I apologize for that. Usually, I am very on top of that, so I acknowledge that and accept responsibility for that as the chair.
Sure.
So, again, if you have further comments, because the three minutes of the public comment are up, please feel free to email us, and we will take those comments under advisement.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? No? Okay, thank you. Okay. Up next, we have the Mashpee Middle High School Boys Hockey Camp in Tilton, New Hampshire, December 1st through the 3rd, and this is an item, I believe, we need to vote to approve. Do we need another chair for Mr. Trevary?
I'm with Coach Peterson, he's the varsity hockey coach for Mashpee Monomoy co-op team. He's, I think you have all in front of you, his proposal for an overnight trip. It includes members from both schools, of both communities. Certainly, I think, part of the, he went over this with me, along with his athletic director quite a bit. The impetus on this is to create culture within the hockey program. These sort of trips tend to do these things. We have a baseball trip that goes down to Florida. That trip is, has someone seeing that upfront, personal. That is an outstanding trip for kids. It's a lifetime of memories. We think hockey could do something similar. The other piece with that is, obviously, having kids from both schools. I think we want to create a bond between those kids and the schools, and make sure that there, it's a seamless transition into the hockey season. He can certainly answer any questions you have regarding the trip, and he's gonna go over the trip a little bit with you. Obviously, you know, safety is primary concern for any of these trips, and I think he's addressed that as well. His coaches will be there with him, along with one or two parent volunteers, one of our coaches, a police officer, as well, which, which helps with all those pieces. So, with no further ado, I'll let Coach Peterson kind of talk about their proposed trip.
Yeah, thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. I know you guys have a very busy schedule, so if you've all gone over the proposal, I'll briefly, just, you know, as Mr. Trevary said, team bonding, team unity, goal-setting, things like that, is, is kind of the primary purpose of this, but also to take them outside of the typical atmosphere that we start every season in, and just give them the opportunity to really kind of unite as a group. Taking two schools and merging those kids together is always a challenge, so I'm just trying to think of new and creative ways to allow them to be able to really bond as a team. So, we will be, you know, the, the plan is to go to New Hampshire, Proctor Academy, which I'm an alumni of, is the school that we're gonna go to, so they've been working really closely with me to, to set up everything for that as well, and they've been very great about offering up all of their facilities and everything, so. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer.
And just, just for a point of reference, Monomoy School Committee did accept the trip on their end.
Any questions from the committee?
I just, when are they leaving? On the 1st? Is that the Friday?
Uh, it says 4 o'clock, Mashpee players will be picked up. Any questions?
I just have one for...
Is the microphone on?
I have one for the superintendent, because I want to recall if we have any policy regarding employees driving school buses out of state.
I don't think it specifically addresses out of state. I'll have to look at that, too.
I guess to that point, the logistics and transportation is option one or option two, and I just decided what the options are.
Yep. So, Monomoy has agreed to provide their minibus, their minivan buses, I guess would be the best way to describe them, so they've agreed to provide those for the, for the trip. So, that'll be, and then the coaching staff will be driving those.
So, their coaching staff will be driving?
Uh, myself, and then likely the other, my other coach, who's actually hired through Mashpee, but he is a Harwich resident, and he'll go through the, will both go through the training at the school, and get put on their insurance as well.
So, just to be clear, we're not using any of our school vehicles, correct?
I don't believe we will need them, though.
And how many, I'm sorry, anybody else have any questions before I... Dan?
Nope.
How many students total did it say? 30, 30 players and three, okay.
How many are Mashpee?
Yeah, how many are Mashpee players, actually, was my, was going with that?
From what I understand, we haven't had a preseason meeting yet to, to get the numbers and, and everything yet, but from what I understand, there are four Mashpee students.
So, tryouts still need to be held?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of the parent volunteers, then, would be a Mashpee parent, I'm assuming?
Um, I have to, following this meeting, I'm gonna have a meeting with the families.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Then, I'll entertain a motion, then, to approve this trip, if anyone would like to offer that.
Matt, I'm sure I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Uh, Don?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes.
Just as a confirming question, our four players would have to be in school that day in order to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And we're gonna get something...
Yeah.
It's a great opportunity, I agree, and I think these, these, these co-op teams definitely need to be able to team build, so I'm glad that they have this opportunity, and hopefully we can get some more co-op opportunities, you know, like a girls' hockey team would be lovely, to get that going and have the same opportunity. So, I'm excited. Congratulations. Have fun.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Then, okay, that covers that. Okay. So, I see we have some lovely Coombe School students, and I, I see a sea of penguins, which makes me personally happy, because that is my favorite animal. So, would you like to come up and tell us about your penguins that you are wearing on your heads?
So, hi, I'm Stephanie Souza.
You could grab the microphone, sorry, just so that, because the people at home need to hear. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Stephanie Souza. I am the math instructional coach at Casey Cooms and Quashnet. I am very excited to be here today with some very special guests from Cooms to talk about a program that we love, and that program, Casey Cooms Kids, is?
ST Math!
We practice that, yes. ST Math, yes, and Gigi is our penguin, our problem-solving penguin that we love and are fortunate enough to have visits from all the time. So, before we get to the good stuff and hear from these amazing kiddos, I just wanted to give you a little synopsis on what ST Math is and how it's affected our math culture at Casey Cooms. So, we have been lucky enough to have ST Math for three-plus years now. We have it at Casey Cooms and Quashnet. We are in our fourth year, second month in our fourth year, and see no signs of slowing down with these kiddos. They are more enthusiastic, hard-working, solve some serious math puzzles, and it really has created an enthusiastic math culture in our schools. So, that's why we're here today, to, to give you a little talk on this. So, what is ST Math? ST Math is an instructional math program that uses the brain's spatial-temporal reasoning ability to solve mathematical problems. And that's basically, a lot of jargon for saying that it teaches kids to use and see mental images in their head that represents a mathematical concept. Then, they're able to use those mental images and manipulate them and transfer them to other concepts to keep them learning mathematical ideas. So, it's pretty amazing. What we love about ST Math is that it starts off with just the visuals, so it gives them just the pictures. And then, what it does is it eventually eliminates the pictures and transforms more into symbols and to, to numbers. So, it's a nice progression. Teachers also can differentiate these objectives by assigning students objectives that can meet their needs. So, students that need to be challenged will be getting higher concepts, students that need a little bit more reinforcement, teachers can do that as well. It also provides equitable access where they can do non-routine problem-solving, and they get instantaneous formative feedback. So, if they make a mistake, which we all know mistakes are a...
Okay.
Oh, they're so okay. They're actually part of the learning process, and we talk about that all the time, that productive struggle is, is very important. What's great about this is that, if they make a mistake, Gigi will go across the screen and will pause, and students can actually pause the screen, rewind, see visually where they've made a mistake, and get to correct it and learn from that. They've had a lot of great success. So, conceptually, students build learning by, they are, they're basically getting a deep, deep, solid foundation on a skill, and then they're able to transfer that. So, if, if students are working on fractions and have a deep conceptual learning, they're able to transfer that into decimals, into ratios, and it, it kind of progresses that Some amazing data, amazing data. Back when we first started in 2020, our school at Casey Cooms solved 40, had a 43% average progress of the program. They solved a combined total of 288,892 puzzles. Flash to the next year, 21, 22, it bumped up to 56%, 482,613 puzzles. And then, for some amazing math, last year, our school averaged 90% completed with 648,427 puzzles solved. And we are on pace to even far surpass this. So, it's amazing to see the, the excitement from students, from teachers, and it's just, it's just a great math culture. So, we are looking here, this is one of our celebrations. We are very fortunate to have a penguin mascot, and sometimes we have Mr. Pranah, that signs, that is our penguin friend, but sometimes we get the real Gigi that comes and visits sometimes, too. So, this is one of our ST Math superstars. We look at data and look at students and the top puzzle solvers, but we also look at students that have persevered and have had made the most progress weekly. Then, those students are announced on the, the morning announcements, and at the very end of the month, get a very special, like, math movement where we do celebrate their success. So, very exciting there. Our numbers have definitely grown, which you'll see. Here is some more ST Math superstar celebrations. Students get their picture taken when their journey is complete, but we also say that their journey is never complete, because there are always more objectives and always more learning to do. So, they learn that real quick, especially towards the end, when they get some very, very challenging puzzles. Here is, at the very, very end, they get a special trophy to celebrate, and another big celebration that we get to do there. Here's a visit from Mrs. O'Brien and the real Gigi to, to promote ST Math in the classrooms, starting as early as preschool, even though those students don't participate in ST Math yet, they already know about Gigi and already getting excited to be able to use, do that program in kindergarten. This right here is just the kindergarten class. We also have a picture of first and second grade, not on here, but it just shows our numbers were, have, have tripled since, since we started. So, without further ado, my amazing Casey Cooms kiddos, do you wanna, do you wanna introduce yourselves real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we go, I'm gonna go down the, down thing. How about we stand up? Okay, ready, go.
My name's Nico Lopez.
Ophelia.
I got my cray.
Parkinett.
Isabella Rodriguez.
Wiki.
Charlotte Whale.
Sawyer Glenn.
Okay, and these are some amazing ST Math superstars. They're here to talk to you that we do promote that when mistakes happen and they're part of the learning process, we have a problem-solving process that we all know how to do, and we talk about how this can help us solve walking across the street, it can help us solve a problem we have in the grocery store, but we use it today in ST Math. So, my friends, can you stand up? And you can, I want you guys come up front.
Sure. All right, so... If parents want to come, they can come behind us and get pictures of us, because I see Karen, so you can come back and get a picture if you want.
Okay.
We'll give them a second to get back here, so they can get good, get good shots.
They're gonna get a picture with you, too.
All right, so to help us remember the problem-solving process, we like to act it out. We're a pretty enthusiastic group. So, we start it off when we have a problem and we're going through the process, so it's the first step we do. Ready?
I see. I think. I try. I learn. I know.
Amazing, amazing. And we say we're, you know, we're showing our muscles for "I know," but we know that we're growing that brain, growing that most important muscle right there, and, and knowing that when they have trouble, they can do that process, but they also, it's great, too, they collaborate with their friends, and they solve the, the problems together. It's not going to the teacher, it's trying to do it independently, using their tools, and then they get to work with each other and collaborate, which is amazing. Okay, so while you guys are still up here, I wanted to ask you a few questions to see if any of you want to answer and tell our friends a little bit about ST Math. So, the first question I wanted to ask you is, what do you like about ST Math? What do you like? And I'm gonna give you, I don't, I guess I'll just put them, all right, Ms. Charlotte, go ahead.
I like that you can help people and that it makes you keep trying and never give up.
Okay. Wiki, what do you like about ST Math?
Um, math.
You like doing math? Yeah? What's your favorite thing in math? What do you, what's your favorite puzzle?
The tomato.
The tomato, right, the tomato that gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and you're working on size. I love it.
I like that you get to learn.
I like that you like to learn, okay.
You get to know, and when you're, when you don't know something, you can always remember in your brain forever.
Right, so we say, right, even puzzles that we learn in kindergarten, in first and second grade, we can be 100 years old and say, "I remember when I learned that skill in ST Math," right, because we can use it in our real life. Okay, so now I got a question for you. What is challenging on ST Math? We know there's a lot of challenges, right? All right, go ahead, Isabella.
At the end, when you're almost gonna finish it.
Why, why is that challenging?
Because it's gonna see if you still remember what you did before.
Okay, got it, okay. What else is challenging?
I like how the levels start easy, and then it goes harder and harder.
Got it, okay, how about you?
I'm gonna add to what you just said. I, it does go easy, harder and harder, but when you finally know it, finally, it goes easier and easier.
Right, so you can use those skills to help you with your next objective and your next puzzle. I love it. Charlotte?
Big Seed is very challenging.
It is a challenging one. Big Seed is one of our puzzles where they logically have to look at the patterns and colors, and then they have to basically manipulate them to make a certain shape. So, it is, it is even tough for the teachers, I will tell you. Nico?
My Silene is also difficult.
Say it again, you're with...
My Silene is also hard.
Oh, yeah, see, I don't know that one. That one's even, I'm learning some puzzles. So, the last question I have for you is, how does ST Math help you learn math and apply it in the real world? What's something that you've learned from ST Math that you can use in real life?
Uh, learning makes it fun. If it's boring, you don't want it.
Okay, right, without fun, you're absolutely right. It's, you can't, you don't want to learn it.
It's fun how you get to do math and learn more math.
Okay, I like it. What else do we learn? What, what other math that we know?
Um, it's fun. It is also fun and challenging at the same time. You get to learn stuff, and it's kind of fun.
Okay.
Even though when you don't even know something, you could still, it's really fun, because when you learn it, always, it makes you like, in your brain, like, "I already know that" or something.
I like it, confidence, I like it. Any other thing over here? Anything? Okay, it's all right. All right, I, I think that's it. Do we have any other final thoughts? We need to tell them about Gigi or about ST Math? Okay, we'll just do two more. All right, here we go.
I love ST Math. ST Math is really fun, and Lexia, because they both are really challenging, and each step of the way, you learn more and more.
Awesome, growing that brain. Let's move on, kiddo.
I love how, when you do something big, you feel as proud as you would feel happy.
I just like that it's a good educational video.
All right, all right, what do we do? What do we say? Thank you for having us?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone.
Anyone have any questions for our math superstars?
Okay, if I make a comment?
Go right ahead.
So, first off, I'm so proud of each and every one of you and all of the other students who are obviously doing such a great job and trying so hard with ST Math. I will say, it has infiltrated our home, and it, ST Math happens between events, and it's a lot of fun, and both Gigi and Ms. Isabella have challenged me with some of the puzzles, so I, it's a wonderful, wonderful program, so congratulations, kids.
Thank you, hi.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? I'm just gonna ask, can you, can you show us one more time what you do with ST Math?
For the problem-solving process?
Yes.
That one, okay, can we do it again?
Yeah.
All right, so, when our problems are tricky and we need to solve them, we're gonna first do, ready? I'll go up to me.
I see. I know. I try. I learn. I know.
That's it. So, we go.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all for coming. It was really awesome to hear about your fun math program, and again, I, I need to get one of these penguin hats, like, I need to do some ST Math.
Penguin, right?
Yeah, so I think we need to get a picture, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to acknowledge Mrs. Souza for coming tonight. She has been instrumental in supporting ST Math throughout...
Yeah, so I think we need to get a picture, I'm sorry.
Just like to acknowledge Mrs. Souza for coming tonight. She has been instrumental in supporting ST Math throughout the school. She's really been championing it. So thank you very much and Mr. Pranah as well.
We're gonna have school to get pictures.
Alright, so we're dancing.
No publicity behind you.
Alright, scoot up, take one step off.
Children come forward. Make sure everybody's still looking. Are y'all on? Are they got their hat on? Everybody? Alright. That would actually be solid. Right, actually they talk to us more. They could make it into that sort of a program. Whole calculus class gets up and does the little. I can't tell if it's raining or it's not. It was. Alright, we'll give it a minute for our visitors to. It is, it is the best part of the meeting is getting our share outs from our students and seeing what they're doing. And they're amazing teachers, so I am appreciative. Okay. Another minute. It's too enticing to have a book here on the way out though. Yes, right? It's really hard to separate. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for September 20th. That's pages six and seven of our packet. Only entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as they are presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Dan?
I vote yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ryan?
I'm staying.
And I am a yes. Ah, Ms. Landry, we are on to you. You had a very good week so far, I hope.
Yes, yes. I mean, I can't really follow that performance, but.
You have to be very expressive.
So I was supposed, the NEA kids were supposed to join me tonight, but they got a little caught up with sports and some homework and stuff like that. So figured I would just come and let you guys know that it was a successful trip that they had in September, this past September. They went to, we started the week off by going to New York, the UN Climate Change Week, where we sat on a panel. And we also led with other indigenous folks and leaders the march to the actual March Against Fossil Fuels that Sunday. And then we did our panel, did some screenings and was able to really move around with different organizations and learn more about rights of nature and what's happening. And really learn side by side with some indigenous leaders. So it was really impactful for them. And then we flew from New York to Palm Springs, California, where we were part of hosting the Rights of Nature Conference, or Indigenous Conference. They sat on another panel, they, we actually led a youth workshop as well and performed some social songs at the gala. So it was a very eventful week, they learned a lot. It was a lot of cultural exchanges within the second part of the week as well. So they did a lot, it was very exhausting, but they're back and now they're ready to do even more work, more on their initiatives with the Herring Project. And obviously this past Monday, Article 12 passed, and Article 10, Article 12 regarding the Educational Interactive Village Site. So we'll be hoping to get into negotiations sooner than later, so we can plan to start developing that and harvesting the materials this spring. So that'll become with a lot of different programming for youth and young adults to be able to partake in that and have schools come as we're actually doing it as well. So maybe work with the different teachers and different classrooms and stuff like that to see who we can get over there while it's happening. As well as, I was talking to the recreational summer camp, so, you know, getting them involved and things like that. We'll also be starting our, more of our college and career readiness. I just spoke with the high school principals, so hopefully get into the senior seminar classes to try and get in touch with the seniors to try and help them more interactively with their senior projects, give them more ideas, see what sort of project that they can be involved with the tribal community and kind of do those monumental sort of projects that kind of keep getting passed on. We're also going to be starting programming soon as far as cultural, well, we're gonna start with craft nights mostly. And then we'll also be starting our after school programming as well within this next coming month. And lunch bunches, we're already in there for lunch bunches. So we're doing that nice and heavy and strong, but, and now we're gonna start slowing down as far as the campaigning and focusing on that and doing more of our programming as far as after school and in the school. So we'll be working hand in hand with those different principals to see what we can do to that. Is there any other questions?
Have any questions?
One of the biggest things as well is the STEP grant is coming to an end. So the State Tribal Education Partnership Grant, so more of the professional developments and things like that. We won't have as much resources to put into it, but the ARPARE grant will, will be able to get the things that we're used to. You know, the things that we've kind of set into place already that the Mashpee Public Schools are annually doing. And we also received a native teacher retention grant, a new five year grant. So we'll be working with the schools with that to try and, you know, get more recruitment with the teachers and then also help within retaining those teachers and bringing them back into the school district. So that's a really good win for us, all of us.
Excellent thing to hear. If no one else has a question, I just had a quick one. On the NEA group that went, how many were Mashpee students and how many were from other school districts?
So we have two, we had two Mashpee students, both were juniors. One Falmouth student who was a sophomore and then another student, oh my god, I'm forgetting where she's from cuz it's off Cape. Do you remember where yourself's from? Medford. Medford, she's a junior at Medford.
Awesome. Sounds like you've been busy.
Yeah.
Which is great. So thank you. No one else has any other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you again for your update. Always look forward to hearing what is going on with the Education Department and the opportunities that are given. And we're gonna keep, I know there was, we're gonna get to the partnership meeting that happened earlier.
And November's coming up, so we'll be doing our performances and we have those scheduled out already. So we'll be able to update after that happens, but those will be going into place at all the schools.
Again, thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Ms. Hair, you're up. So I guess just to give a little bit of background for the public who may not have watched our September 20th meeting. Ms. Hair is an instructor through the Rec Department for a program called You Go Girl. She came and discussed some concerns she had about a flyer, but that kind of opened up a discussion more about equity, diversity, inclusion, belonging. You know, basically what our goals as a school committee we've set, what the district has set. And she felt that there were some areas that we need to look a little closer at, so she asked to be invited back. And we have, we have her here today to begin this discussion, which is part of a very long discussion that we have been started and getting more input. So we always are welcome for that, welcoming that, and I'll let you take that now. If I got that recap right, if you need to add.
No, that was great, I didn't even expect that. So that was greatly appreciated, great recap. Hi, thank you for allowing me the space and time to come back and kind of dive into it a little bit more. A three minute address is challenging, so trying to get all the right things in is hard. And in reviewing the discussion that happened after we left, I just felt it was really important to come back and make sure that the breadth of the message was received. So I requested to come back and have this opportunity because in our September address, we tried to say that this was more than a racial conversation, right? That this encompassed many different communities. And the communities that we highlighted in that address were military, English as a second language, our non-white, non-Native American racial and ethnic groups, mental health, addiction, neurodiversity, our social emotional groups that are struggling and our population that's socio-economically challenged. And so as I began to kind of dig around and look into things, I accessed DESI to give me an idea of what Mashpee's composed of, cuz I didn't really know what was composed of. And I'm not sure who it was, I couldn't see everyone in the message, but it sounded like Mr. Myers had said, you know, we should get a breakdown and see what our population's made up of. So I did do a PowerPoint and I did it way too late, so I'm sorry if you didn't get it, but I, I can go out in the notes. But when looking at our DESI profile, we, we have two main categories, right? We have our student race and ethnicity breakdown and we have these subgroups. And I thought it was just really important to look at these and realize, you know, the volume of Hispanic students, the volume of multirace, non-Hispanic and African-American students. And talk about how those students are represented in the school and what opportunities are represented and kind of target those populations. But I really think those subgroups is the more important conversation for me personally. When we talk about students with disabilities at 15.1% from Mashpee, our high needs at 49.8% and our low income at 41.2%. So when I really talk about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, those are, are a real big part of what my focus is. And I think that the ethnic groups, they, they make up a big part of some of these groups. So I began to look around and I thought, I've been surrounded by people who have supported this and said, well, what, what are you asking the committee to do? Right, like what is the solution? What is your answer? And I started to make a list and I started to ask other families that might be impacted by this, what is it that you would like to see? How would you like your family to be supported in different ways? And as I began to kind of research what other districts were doing, I realized I'm not finding the same information on our website. That, cuz that's our, that's my main resource, right, to go and look at. So if I go to, you know, Falmouth's website, they have a department for diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. Bourne has a committee that the community can be part of, that parents can be part of, that's focused on diversity, equity and inclusion. And they have points of contact, a specific resource within their school system that you go to for questions and that is held accountable for making sure that initiative and metrics are.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So I'm familiar with Falmouth, they have a DEIB officer. Was Bourne, is Bourne's an officer as well?
I didn't see an officer, I saw a committee. I saw a committee group.
I was referring, you mentioned they had a point, like a person, so it's just the chair? Okay.
They're all a little different, they're not all the same, I noticed, but I noticed that most webs, most of their district websites had a page for diversity, equity and inclusion. They had a governing group or individual. And many of them had annual measurable metrics that were listed on the website. And so I started to look at Mashpee's and what I found was that we have a vision statement. I didn't find any annual measurable metrics that are being reported on. I didn't find who is a point of contact for our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging initiatives. I didn't find any funding that we are utilizing for making sure that our staff is more diverse. There's a lot of state funding that's available for housing support for staff coming in, for training. And then the other thing that was quite, that was challenging and I think was really kind of where I started and the whole reason I wanted to have this conversation was the community resources, right? And our community partnerships. And when we go to our community resources page, it's a slideshow with a few slides, I mean a few links. There's not very many. I think Cape Kids Mills is on there, but there, it's, it's very limited. There's nothing for people that are struggling with mental health and addiction, right? There's nothing for families that are struggling with abuse and trauma in the home. So I wanted to have a better understanding of those questions. Who is our contact? What are our measurable metrics? What do we hope to have accomplished and implemented in the schools by the end of this school year?
Trying to find, and I thought we had included our district improvement plan. It's part of my goal packet that's in there as well. So what, four years ago now, we did our district improvement plan?
It went into effect in 21, 22.
Okay. So in, during that process, we bring together stakeholders from the school itself, faculty, students, administrators. We get parents and we get community members from various parts of the community. We've had some of our Southport Falcons, we've had business owners, I believe, trying to remember if we, that we've had, and obviously the tribe. And we've had, we had this rather large group come together to create the district improvement plan, what we call the Plan for Success, which runs from 2021 through 2025.
Right.
This was the first time that our school district developed such a plan. Before that, I'm not sure we had something as concrete as this document. It is a living document, so there's always room for it to improve, to change, to morph to the needs of, and we review it. It is something that comes up, the superintendent uses it for her goal setting, we use it for our goal setting. And these are where we get our measurable pieces, this is what we use to create our goals. Excuse me. So when this was developed, we took all of that input, we had, gosh, how many sessions did we have of that? I started out as a parent on that, just for your knowledge, and then got elected to the school committee and shifted to a school committee representative. So I came in as just a parent wanting to participate and it shifted a little, but we had what, like four, five?
It was about very much, and then there was some Zoom ones.
Yeah, so there was the large group, but then there were subgroups within that that really developed these pillars that you saw. And this is kind of our, our starting point, okay? So for the measurable pieces, these are where, when we make our goals, we try to take these items right here and create our action steps and then create our measurable, our, what we're gonna be able to measure for progress. You know, you mentioned last time that you attended Dr. Wornum's thing. So you're aware that, you know, DEIB in any organization takes, takes time, it can take up to 10 years. At the MASC, MAS joint conference, not, last year was, the focus was DEIB for the whole conference. So a lot of the workshops were focused on how to, you know, build, how to bolster, because a lot of places, it's a new thing. It's not something that, you know, people wake up in the morning and go, oh, I know how to solve all of this right away. It can't be solved right away, as you know. So I attended that, we, we all variously have gone through different trainings, attended different workshops, been trying to take in these practices. The Falmouth DEI Officer presented, I believe, one of the ones I went to. There was another one from another off Cape. Were we in that one together? I know.
Yeah, there was one school that had like, they've been working on a program for like, I think it was like five to eight years and they were still like.
They were still needing to improve. So, you know, we, we kind of go to those, those things and then come back and look here when we make our goals in August. So do we have our specific goals? We did set them, this year we're looking, you know, to increase engagement, not only with the student voice, which I think is very important and valuable because, you know, you're talking about reaching out to families. And I think hearing from the students firsthand is a great measurable way to say, what do you need? And how can we as a committee implement policies and procedures that can, as you pointed out, make sure items are funded the way they need to be funded, make sure the programming is in place and, you know, give directive to the superintendent to implement programming and curriculum that. the superintendent to implement programming and curriculum that is inclusive of all." So, I'm trying to make sure I answer your, I jotted it down, but I can't read my own thing. So it was measurable, the programs, in terms of a point person for this, I'm not sure that we've designated an individual. I think we kind of take it all together as a united committee, that this is a goal we have committed to work toward. However, that being said, having a specified individual might be something we consider looking at. You know, budget concerns do come into this mix. You know, that is going to be like a position that would likely require professional status of, whether it's a counselor, whether it's a, you know, someone who has a certain set of skills and training and certification levels. So, you know, budgetary-wise, that is something that we, as a committee, can put on our radar and start discussing and looking at as we go into the budget season. Will it happen this year? I cannot guarantee that, but is it a goal for us to work towards and keep working and striving towards improving? Of course it is. I, I don't know, does anyone else have any, I mean, I'm trying to think if I'm missing anything, if anybody has anything I've skipped here or not mentioned. I don't know, did you get a chance to look at, was this, this wasn't included in the packet, was it? That got posted, this, like, the first, specifically the first, because, you know, we had, we also, I had asked superintendent after that to include the DESI information. We also looked at our staffing as well, because that's also been a goal, that has been one of our goals, is getting a staff that is reflective of our student body. We are painfully aware that our staff does not necessarily represent our students. And we do know that representation matters, and having a teacher that, you know, looks like you and comes from a similar background as you can be beneficial to learning, because you're able to identify. Studies have proven it time and time again. And we, as a committee, you know, and the superintendent, we have been working very hard, as you heard Ms. Landry mentioned, the tribe has grants, you know, we're constantly looking to make sure that we are able to build up our native teachers as well, if we can get them, but to your point about non-native, non-Caucasian students, we hear you on that as well, and that's another thing that we have been working on and have been trying to. I know you mentioned housing. Yes, those grants are out there, however, the housing market, unfortunately, on the entire Cape, is a challenge. So while the money may be there, the actual housing is not. And we have had that happen with some of our staff. So it's, again, not a challenge we're unfamiliar with, and it is one that we are, as a committee, not, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe there's a policy we could look at to ensure we're getting those grants, or asking the superintendent and her staff to check into those, but if the housing's not there, I'm not sure, you know, but it can't hurt to look and get the information, and I'm definitely, you know, open to that. I think, you know, in terms of some of the other subsets, you mentioned the ESL, that has been at our forefront as well. You know, our, we do have a very strong ESL, or I'm sorry, program, and I'm also thinking social-emotional, I was really thinking more social-emotional, I lifted ESL, but we have both in place. We do have, how many, did we have that listed? How many students?
12.1 where English is not the first language, and 5.3 the English language learners.
We have about 109 students in the EL program.
And how many different languages do we know? I know Hope usually knows that right off the top of her head. But, yeah, so we are aware, and we do get updates on that, and we are actually budgeted, we budgeted left for this fiscal year, right?
We added staffing.
We've added additional staffing. So we recognize that we were a little deficient in our staffing needs there, so we have recently added staffing.
Well, as a programmer, we've added people to accommodate. The state says how much time needs to do those kids, so we've put more staff to do that. We've also received funding from the state. We've moved to threshold of the player now, we call that one.
So, some of these things definitely have been things that we, as a committee, and with the superintendent and the administration, and the principals and the schools, we are actively working towards. Unfortunately, some of them are not, you know, and you know this as well, like, it'd be lovely if we could all just see the result overnight, but we are monitoring it, I feel. Are there places we can improve? You mentioned a couple, yeah, where I see, yeah, okay, you're right, our website. There's some pages on our website that I also am kind of like, hmm. So, do we need to maybe have a website discussion? Of course. I don't see a problem with that, and, you know, I'm sure the superintendent would not object to maybe having a committee put together to look at it, or even our school councils. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but each school has a school council that is comprised of parents, faculty, and usually at least one member, and I think that's a, I want to say that's a state...
Community at large.
Yeah, community at large, and I believe that's like a state, like, mandate, is it not?
It's very prescriptive.
It's very prescriptive, like, what the composition of that is. And that committee meets with the principal, I'm trying to remember if we met, we used to meet monthly? Monthly? Again, I sat on the KCC and the Quashnet parent advisory committees, and that's a chance for parents in that specific school to meet with the principal. Those meetings are technically open meetings, and any parent can attend them, as is any of our subcommittee meetings for the school committee. So we do have specific subcommittees that are open to the public and are able to be attended by the public. So, you know, we welcome people to participate. You know, we only know what we know, and if we don't have people talking to us, we can't improve.
100%.
But I highly recommend, you know, if you're curious about those school councils, that's like, specific to the school, and they're talking about, they're kind of advising the principals in a sense of, like, those types of, what are the after-school programs? Sometimes that discussion might come up. I know at one point, we talked about the traffic patterns around, you know, for drop-off. And that's another place to get that representation. Whether or not parents are aware that that is something they can do, I believe the emails still go out, excuse me, via the blogs. Do you guys, you put them out through the blogs, I'm assuming? Like, it is still, so, and, again, you know, you can always email those people as well and say, "Hey, this is what's going on, like, what's going on in the school." I'm pretty sure they also do an update in those school-specific, not the district-specific communications. Community partners, that's one. There are a lot out there, and again, that goes back to that website discussion, and maybe there, there does need to be retooling. You know, as a committee, again, our purview is policy, budget, and the superintendent's performance, and hiring, and evaluation, and all of that. In terms of what goes on, like, in the schools, in a sense, operationally, it's kind of, we might say to the superintendent, "Could you look into this?", and then it's on the superintendent to then enact, follow up, and look at. In terms of policy, we can, as a committee, review our policies on this, and I believe our goals for this year are focused on increasing that representation, like I said, through student voice, through engagement with the community, and making sure the community understands what we, as a committee, do. I mean, we are a pretty, we might not necessarily look it, but we do all come from very diverse backgrounds, and we do try very hard, I believe, in my work with these gentlemen, to represent our constituency, you know? That being said, there's always room for improvement, and we are on this journey that will take up, you know, it can take up to 10 years at the minimum to really see a change in a culture of this, of, like, this type of culture. Did I, is there a question of yours that I didn't touch on? Is there anything you would like to expand on? Does the committee have anything else to add?
Kathy, actually, can I, if it's okay, to add?
Yes.
So, first off, I just want to commend you for feeling comfortable enough to come to a meeting like this, and to present, and to share your thoughts on the matter. You know, you indicated that you identify as a community member of color. I think it's that much more of a challenge, you know, to sit in front of a predominantly male school committee as a person who identifies as an individual of color, to share and to move forward with, looking at how, you know, us as a committee and as a school system can improve that representation across the board. So I just, I felt as though, to pause for a moment, show gratitude, like you showed gratitude for us around, around that aspect. I can only use this card for a little bit longer, but as a newer member to the committee, I would say that I agree that there has been a lot of conversation spent around looking at the intersectionality and wanting to move that bar forward. You know, I know that we'll be speaking a little bit more a little later about superintendent's evaluation, but, you know, we recently had a meeting, and even in that meeting, it wasn't just looking at face value at some of the data points around diversity, race, racism, white privilege, et cetera, but digging in further to better understand, what does that actually mean? I think, you know, case example would be, you know, okay, how many community members of color do we have in sports? That's great, but what positions do they hold? Right? Because we know that there's even inequities there. So, I feel as though, you know, to kind of second Kathy, the, the goal is to kind of move the bar forward and continue to see this progress. And I guess I would just propose to the committee, I think one of the ways in which DEI work moves forward in an important way is, every decision that is made, there's a pause moment to reflect not just how it affects the community, but specifically, how would a policy, a decision affect marginalized community members, to kind of dig in one more question further. So, you know, as we review what we are going to be looking at for our policies and procedures, maybe including something in that way, to have that one, one more question about our marginalized populations could continue to support progress with looking at DEIB work.
Thank you. Dan? Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One, just to emphasize, and I know it's on this handout, but I don't know if you have a copy of it or not. In regard to the action that this school community has taken historically, and been supported by the town, from a budgetary standpoint, if you compare Mashpee to other towns, particularly here on Cape, and probably off of the Cape, we're one of the few places in Truville County that do not charge any fees to our students for them to participate in any extrapertorial activities, or to ride buses. We have historically been a no-fee zone here on Cape. And, you know, a couple of years ago, that also transpired into the AP exams, where we pay 100% of that regardless of whether they pass or not. And so, those are things that aren't highlighted, you won't find them on, I think, our webpage, but those are definite actions we've taken to ensure that there's no one, based upon their financial or ability, who cannot participate if they want to. The other, and I'll pass this to the superintendent, because with my understanding that the assistant superintendent held kind of the DEI hat here at that path on Mashpee, is that...
She, she holds many hats regarding sort of issues brought to the forefront that require an investigation. If I'm allowed to comment a little bit, and I thank Victoria for coming as well, in this district, we're a small district, but I think what we pride ourselves on is being very connected to our families. So we are well-resourced with counselors who are very tentacled to all of the community resources. When we have families who experience challenges in any area, and regardless of the race or ethnicity of the family, we want them to reach out to our school personnel, whether it's a counselor, whether it's a nurse, the principal, the assistant principals, to problem-solve on that level. And I acknowledge that the website may be lacking in some of those things, but I personally, for the people connected to us and who attend this district, I want them to come to the schools before they say, "I'm going to go look on the website for help," because we really want that personalized service, and I do feel strongly that we have strong teams at every school who can pretty much connect a family. And they also sometimes notice things before it's brought up, and they reach out to the families as well. So, from my perspective, I acknowledge that the website doesn't have all those pieces, but we have them in place. In terms of a DEI director, we did mull around that option several years ago when it became sort of the thing to do, but again, that adds one more layer of a person who then is sort of working from this level downward, and from the work we've been doing over the last few years, everything has to start basically at that classroom level and build up. And yes, the principals have to know what they need to know, but if you can't affect change within those classrooms with the teacher, it's hard to sort of make the overall change that we need. We're like a big cruise ship trying to, you know, alter 10 degrees at a time, but I have found that it starts at a building level, and really starts in the classroom level, and has to build up. So the work that we're doing with Kalise Warne and with the ADL, getting everyone to sort of reflect on themselves first as human beings, and then on their own practices, is what filters through to the classrooms, to what they notice, to what they don't tolerate, student to student, other adult interactions. So, I just wanted to say, from my perspective, that is where the work is most important to me, and will build, and eventually, within the five-year range of affecting change, that's how it happens. And we see it when we interact, when principals interact with a teacher who's had a misstep, and you kind of, kind of dig into that why, and it's just a very slow process, it involves human beings who sometimes don't recognize in themselves what needs to be changed, and so we have to try to give them that skill set, and the experience through professional development, the tribe's professional development has been great. But again, I do see that we are well-resourced to support families in all the areas, whether it's addiction, the vaping issues, social-emotional needs. We have, I think what we need, we can add more. We're looking at trying to add a licensed social worker to the district as a district-wide person. But I will say, too, the town of Mashpee supports its schools very well. The voters do a very nice job of supporting our budget. We've never, I mean, we have challenges sometimes, but in general, no. We are much smaller than Falmouth. Every district, it's kind of like when we went through COVID, and there would be meetings of all of us, our group of superintendents, and the initial expectation was, "Okay, we're going to move together, we're going to do this together." It was impossible to do anything totally alike, because we don't mirror each other close enough. In theory, we do, but the inner workings of each town are different. So I, and I love Falmouth's DEI, he came to our last tribal partnership meeting a couple weeks ago, and I met with him in the summer, and they have a different approach. I really feel strongly that we have the people in place on a school basis to affect the same kind of change that Falmouth will be able to do. But anyway, that's just my thought.
No, just to piggyback off of that, though, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I want to call you, I want to be like proper, but I don't want to like assume to call you Victoria, so I'm sorry. What your point is, though, is while we have the infrastructure in place, and we have the people, and we are creating these connections, my, what I'm getting from your comments are that you feel that the families in our district are not aware that these people and places and these activities, whatever they might need, is available. Is that correct? You're looking for a more outward showing of that, rather than someone coming after the problem? Am I understanding that correctly, or...
I think, I think that's part of it. I come from it from a few different perspectives. So, I am a parent of children at the school. On a personal note, I have a child that's on an IP, and I had to go through the process to advocate for three years to get resources for my family, to get him on an IP, including behavioral help through JRI and Gosnold, and multiple assessments and diagnoses to even get him tested for an IP. Resources were not abundant. Resources, I had to come in to these meetings prepared to take pieces of information that were presented to me, and then put them together in a story that advocated for my child's need. So I'm coming from that perspective, of feeling as a parent who has come directly to the schools for help, not supported. As a military spouse coming in, there's nothing for military families in our school district. There's no... There's no community building for them, there's no booth for them at open houses or PTOs. And the school's a hub. The school's a connector and our military families are a large population in our school with the base right next door. And then I'm also coming from it as, you know, I was, I was a child who was underrepresented and had addiction and mental health issues in my family. And I know of children in this school that are struggling with the same things and they may be able to talk to their teachers because we have an amazing staff and a loving staff, but it's not openly talked about in the school. It's not openly shared in the school what our community is struggling with that allows the people that are not struggling with it to be called to action, giving them opportunities to volunteer and to participate. And also, when you're not talking about things and they're not out in the forefront, it creates shame for children because it feels like, oh, well, we don't talk about this here. You know, you know, my dad, I, I'm a substitute and I have a kid come up to me and say, it's my dad's birthday. And I'm like, oh, that's great. Did you sing happy birthday this morning? No, he's in jail and I don't get to see him. And then, you know, you talk to the teacher, oh, well, we just don't really, you know, like we don't talk about the things. And teachers know when kids are going home and there may be abuse out. You know, you see it in the kids and we don't talk about those things. I'm, I'm not, I'm not from education administration, I'm not from education. I have 12 years healthcare IT background. I've seen and been part of DEIB initiatives being brought into healthcare, right? It's a big wave, a big move. And I know that in order for a program to be a priority, there has to be someone responsible for it and there has to be measurable metrics to hold that accountable. I, I see and I hear and appreciate that it's important to you guys, that you are having conversations, that you are have a training. But it's been two years since 2021 and 2025 is two years away. And we want to increase staff that represents the diversity in our community from what to what, from when to when. If a special education teacher had a plan for a student, they would have to have, I'm going to take a student from here in this with a number to here in this. And I do feel like that's not too much to ask for this far into the process. So I'm coming at it from a lot of different angles, trying to focus and make sure that it's a productive conversation where I can support your guys' initiative because I believe you are, your heart is there and that you are working on it. And I believe in Mashpee and a connected community. But I also have peers out there and I see students and my children's peers who are struggling and they don't feel that connection and they don't feel that support. And I believe we're at a place where we should be able to give that at a larger level. So I think it's a few different layers to it, Ms. Lewis, you know, I-
As it always is, I feel, you know, anytime you talk about DEIB, there's, there's multiple layers. I don't think it's, you know, you made the great point in the beginning when you said it's not just race. I mean, DEIB is inclusionary of everything. Race is a piece and is one, you know, when you do, one of the trainings that I've gone through, we had to do our identity bubbles, you know, and how you identify in different spaces changes depending on who you're with and all of the different things you might identify. And, you know, some people had 10 things, some people had 30, you know, because they identified in different spaces, different ways. And I think, you know, to your point about moving forward and looking at those measurable goals, you know, for us as a committee, I know we're looking at student achievement, which I know might sound a little strange to look at it that way, but when a student's supported and a student is engaged and feels that they're in an environment that they are able to learn, and we see that then translate to those student achievements, whether it's their STAR tests that they administer throughout the year and how that supports get put in place. You know, the free lunch program, I think personally, as a kid who went through a free lunch program herself growing up for, for reasons, you know, that, that food insecurity, those kids in Mashpee, and I think as a committee, we are aware that we are in a community of need. You know, we do have a large number of students in need and we do have a lot of students who need various things. And I think we're also fortunate, you know, I know you said you struggled with your child who has special needs for the classroom. I do feel Mashpee in terms of how we represent that and maybe, you know, we can ask Dr. Curley at a future meeting to kind of go over some of Mashpee's programs and what we do offer so that families who might not be aware of what our special ed department does, just kind of an informational piece maybe, to, to let people know, like Mashpee does offer a lot and, you know, I'm sorry you had that experience, but in terms of some of other, and I'm not trying to say we're better than other districts, but I know that there are other districts that it's not as readily available and parents have had to fight as well. And so I, that being said, I think as a committee, we can go back, look at our, look at our goals. You know, you've, you've presented some interesting points, you know, military families. I don't know, Matt is a military member, like are you aware of programs? And, you know, we, we're lucky, we have a military member on our committee as well to kind of represent that too. And like I said, we all are very diverse and I think knowing these resources, if, is there a resource with the military that, you know, we could set up something?
Heroes in transition.
I don't even know if we track our military families in the school unless they self-identify. I'm not even sure that's a metric. We as a district, when people enroll, list, you know what I mean? Or if that's something that we would even ask people to list, you know, like, and I, I don't know if that's a state thing, I don't, or if that's just a self-identifier that people might, again, looking at what you identify with in a space you're in, I understand your point of making that connection because those families do move and they have a very different life experience than say someone who grew up in this town and has, is like generations upon generations. Perhaps there are ways for us to look as we move forward. I know we've been a little focused heavily on that racial piece with Dr. Warnham and implicit bias and making sure we're aware of ourselves and making sure that we are growing confident, students and confidence in who they are and making sure they are able to be themselves here. I mean, LGBTQ community in our schools, we've got lots of different marginalized groups, like you said. And perhaps one thing we do need to do is look at how we are communicating that these resources are in place and where we might need to strengthen them. So does anyone else have any other comments or?
Yeah, I guess, you know, this is a very sensitive subject, I feel like, in any area that you bring this into, you know, that discussion and the platforms that might be. You know, and just speaking from my own personal experience, you know, I can't speak to the entire committee, but I'd be lying if I said, you know, everything was rainbows and flowers and if I didn't even contemplate myself about resigning from this committee because of some of the things and the concerns that I've raised. I think it's great to see other people coming in here and asking those questions. You know, when Dr. Kalise Warnham originally first came, all of the department heads and town officials were invited to that meeting and majority did show up, however, there were some that did not show up as well. You know, they crammed almost like 12-hour session into like an hour and a half. And it was expressed at that point in time, I felt like sometimes we're just checking off the box. And I will say that the superintendent has done a phenomenal job in that area with at least listening to some of the concerns. At that particular meeting, two years ago, the outreach working group, I was on it with the then-chair Nicole Bartlett and the superintendent, and that conversation did come up along with diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. And we had talked about, you know, the town also needs to step up. Some of these people are town, uh, town officials who are hired by the town. Maybe the school committee puts up half of the salary and then the town takes the other half of the salary because it's across the board. It's not just with the school. I will say that the school has done a phenomenal job in this area. I think that we have a lot of further work to do before us, but I do understand, you know, the issues that we have and sometimes, you know, even sometimes I feel like, you know, the token Wampanoag or token Indian because I am the, you know, Native American representative, I might be a minority when we were the majority at one point in time. But I do get the calls from parents and from students feeling like some of our kids are being targeted and harassed and those are hard conversations to really have and you do bring them to the appropriate channels that might be. And I think that we can dedicate a whole meeting to this, but I think the Mashpee Diversity and Inclusion Committee is a great committee, a town committee that we have. I think that we could rally them and the town manager to have that kind of support, you know, to the superintendent's point, you know, the town, going to town meeting, I mean, anybody that was there would have heard one of the parents that did talk about the erasure with even in the schools and to speak about Wampanoags in past tense. So I'm not going to sit here and say that, you know, everything's great and gravy, but we are working, you know, towards a better future and that's why I have continued to stay in this capacity to advocate, make sure that, you know, everyone's voice is being heard and included. So I appreciate you for coming out and bringing this and I hope, you know, others would also feel comfortable enough and have that strength. And if they don't, I hope you continue to advocate in this area, but I do want to let it be known that I do believe that the superintendent is doing everything that she can possibly do in her power and the school committee is to really address some of these concerns. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your time and the thought that's been put into all of these initiatives. I, I think as my leaving note is just, as someone who feels there's still so much to be done here, and contentment is not my strong suit. I am personally working on that, but I, I want to see more. I want to see more in this school and I want to see more in this community. But I am very willing to put my working boots on and be part of that work. What, for the other parents that feel that way and for myself, what is my next step? Where do I go? And I'm, I'm meeting with Marie next week who heads, chairs the diversity, equity, inclusion for town meeting and look forward to see what's going on there. But, um, you know, what's the path to be active here and to be part of supporting you guys to make sure this change happens?
My recommendation, volunteer. You know, you don't have to necessarily be in the building every day to volunteer, but there are many ways to volunteer within our district. That's a great way to get connected, kind of get a sense of what's going on in the district. I know you mentioned you're a substitute, so thank you for that. I know what that gig is like as well. But if you wanted, I'm sure we're looking for substitute teachers sometimes, so I don't know.
Oh yeah, no, she's a working substitute.
I'm, I'm, I was there last week.
She's active substitute.
No, no, I'm just saying, but if other parents were interested and had time and wanted to do that, that's another option. You know, getting involved in, you know, if they want to come and sit for our meetings, that's another great place. We're trying, you know, obviously to increase that engagement so people know what we're working on. But I guess volunteering is always going to be number one in my mind, just because you do get into the different things. Join the PTO if you can, they do usually offer childcare. And even if you have to bring, it's usually not that big of a deal if a kid-
I will say things like that, it's, it's not easy to be the only brown individual in the room who wants to sit and talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and it's not always an invited topic in these rooms.
I can appreciate that.
So that is a, it would be nice for it to be a little bit more of an impactful working group versus, I hope that I can fall in line behind the book fair and the bake sale and the barbecue because those aren't as important to me.
Got it.
You know?
I can totally appreciate that.
I don't mean to be insensitive or, again, contentment.
But again, sometimes getting in, you know, and bringing that voice, you know, can be valuable and I, I don't want to marginalize what your comments are because I do understand what you're saying. I might not necessarily live it exactly, but I do understand to an extent some of what your concerns are there and I, you know, we can continue to talk as a school committee about that.
Yes, and I want to appreciate that you guys have a full agenda ahead of you and I've already taken so much time.
That's why we wanted this to be an agenda item so we could have this conversation and a little bit more time devoted to it. You know, again, you bring up, perhaps we do look at adding some kind of a committee, subcommittee in a sense about this specifically. You know, and that's something that we can discuss a little further and, you know, with the superintendent and see what options we can do to increase that space for those conversations to include the parents. Superintendent, for you?
All I was going to say was I know that each of the three schools has their no-place-for-hate steering committees, which I believe have to have parent representation as well as teachers and students. That is a good place because each school annually must choose initiatives that fall under that in order to maintain that designation. So that's a place. Then if we're having any kind of events, like if it's Dr. Warnham coming back or whatever, if you have a sphere of sort of people you influence promoting it as well, because as you know, we don't get the attendance that we want, the people that need to hear it don't generally come to those things. So it's how can we better market that? Maybe it's a meal, maybe it's a lot of other incentives to sort of get them in the room to hear the message is the starting point, but whatever support we could gather through your connections, we could maybe access those as well for events and initiatives.
Andrew, I have a question for you. You know, we're talking parents and families, but you also mentioned the students and really that is our main focus.
The only reason I'm here.
At the high school level, you do have clubs and programs, correct, that are focused in various points of DEIB?
Yes, I believe so. I can't remember the exact names, but we have like-
We have all of them here. Actually, I think they're on the, they might be included in that packet.
Like, I know from all, Peer Leaders is a big one, which is inside defamation league, right? So it's kind of like everything that they do.
I guess where I'm going with this is perhaps the student advisory committee, you know, in your meetings going forward could try to figure out a way how to take those groups. And I know in the past, we've had other groups come to the lower, you know, to the middle, to the upper elementary and the lower elementary school and work with stu-, you know, like have that older student, younger student mentorship.
Yes.
You know, and, and help create that space on a student level as much as a parent admin- you know, like as, as much as getting the parent guardian participation. I think you brought up a very good point about the students who might not have that, you know, whether, and I know we've talked about it and we have other things that do cross. I know there's the reading buddies, they've done reading buddies from the sixth graders going to the Coombe School, and that's a great program where, you know, the sixth graders go and they've got a little buddy that they go and read to and they make that connection. And maybe some of these clubs at the high school are something that could go even further and kind of help create even more of those connections and create more of those spaces where those kids are able to connect. I, I say those kids and I don't mean to keep saying those kids, but, you know, for lack of a better term, like where the students are able to make connections with students who they can relate to, who they can see themselves in and-
Definitely one of the things that we're trying to help with, we're trying to go around to all the clubs, just talk to people, get people to join us, get them to like mingle within each other. But I'd say from my experience, there is already a lot of diversity within these clubs. But I just know even as like a school community, we're very like homogenous, we're one group. Like I know one of my friends working on a senior project where they want to have a council or like a support group for immigrants, first lang-, not first, the-
English language learners.
Second language, yeah. And all those groups together as one. And so I, what I'm trying to say with that is we, the students recognize this and they're trying to also do some work from their end, but like what I see at high school day to day, everyone kind of is together, especially in like, I know, Human Rights Club, all these clubs really, everyone's-
In the clubs themselves. I guess my thought, and I think Ms. Hare's concern too, though, is that's just a small snapshot and how do we then get that message broader, shared, and engaging more students who are, who could be part of those clubs, who could benefit from those connections, who could help grow this conversation and help build, as Superintendent DeBor said, start in that classroom level and keep encouraging the change at that level so that we do start seeing the institutional change that we are all working towards and looking for.
We're definitely going to start, we tried to, we did a lot of advertising last year and we're going to start doing our Mashpee Minute, so we're going to put, I was thinking we could feature like a club every week or so, but I think it's more of an issue of some people just not wanting to do club, like focusing on like sports or just homework. But I think definitely we could try and get more people into the club.
Yeah, but again, too, like thinking, how do we get to the Quashnet? How do we get to the Coombe?
As I say, I think that's important to get to the kids sooner so that they want to participate when they're in high school. And by feeding back into the community, so like these groups that are at the high school level and mentorship and connecting, that creates motivation. Because for a lot of these kids, us adults are just the peanuts teacher. It's just another adult telling me what- It's just another adult telling me what to do, saying the same messages. It's not as impactful, but you get a 16-year-old talking to an eight-year-old, and that 16-year-old hangs the moon. They're the coolest thing in the world. And that eight-year-old's going to embody and internalize that message so much differently. And although I think that's, this is, I think you brought up such a great point, you say our community is so homogenous. So when I went to Dr. Warham's, you know, address, I realized my implicit bias towards Mashpee, and I thought that it was very homogenous. And then I started subbing in schools, and I realized I was very wrong. We might, some of us might look alike, but there's some serious struggles that go across the spectrum from neurodiversity, from, you know, insecurity at home, whether it be financial or just safety. And we're not addressing those well enough, I think, you know? And it can be as simple as a song that you sing to them before they go home, you know, saying, I hope you have safe hands at home. I hope you have loving words at home. I hope you have safety. But if you don't, we're here when you get back. Just bringing that lightness of a conversation and letting them know, we know and understand that you may all be facing challenges, and we're here. We're a safe space. I think those things are really important. And I think that's a great initiative.
Ms. Hare, I just want to also pause me and say thank you, because you are probably one of the most active individuals I see in the community when it comes to supporting not just the work that's happening in the schools, but you're connected to the rec department, you know? And you have brought a lot of, you bring yourself to that. And in some cases, in a lot of ways, you are one of the only community members of color that are participating in this arena, right? And at the risk of sounding microaggressive here, I think it is a tough challenge that you're facing when it comes to being maybe one of the only community members of color who is, as I said, joining the PTO or whatever it may be. And I guess my recommendation, and I tend to use it in this way, as Superintendent DeBoer had said, rallying your community members to also join in with you, because those conversations will not change and cannot change until there is more representation from our community participating in those discussions. And also looking at, you know, when these meetings are happening that are, again, ground level, not top level, is there a reason why there is a lower participation for, you know, more watching less community members? What is that? Why is it happening? And how do we address that so that in that way we can get those voices there? So I personally thank you, and I also thank Mr. Whedon for sharing himself tonight and obviously where he's been in this role as well.
I'll be back. I want to respect the rest of your energy and time, and I appreciate the dialogue, I really do. It's not easy to be here and stand out, but it needs to be done. So thank you for feedback to help me on that journey and try to...
Well, I personally want to also thank you. You know, it's, again, we've all kind of acknowledged, and you've said it, you know, it's not easy to be in that seat and talk to us where you don't see yourself. So I appreciate your courage, and I appreciate your candor. And I hope, you know, we do continue these conversations. I, you know, I know myself, and I believe the board, or the committee, rather, we do see the need for the change. We are not blind to some of the struggles that our students face. And, you know, it's people like you. It's people like those of us who are trying to have this conversation, which is not easy, as Mr. Whedon said, that, you know, that's what makes the difference. The voices kind of coming together and having these talks that aren't easy, and I appreciate it. Like I said, I truly do appreciate your willingness to discuss and bring these ideas and give us some more things to look at and, you know, talk with the superintendent about how we might implement some things and some changes to at least get the ball rolling a little bit faster than it might have been.
I'll never hesitate to also reach out and utilize me and any kind of collaborative creative ways where we can, you know, work together to encourage our community to be more participative and to show up. And I think it's decades of discouragement, it's a form of generational pattern, and it's hard to stand up and fight for it. So we definitely have our work to help.
Again, thank you. Thanks.
Superintendent DeBoer. Okay. Just quickly to go over our half days that we had, particularly in the full day on October 6th. That's the one I really wanted to focus on. That's considered, we've always labeled it our day-to-day. And that is where pretty much all the teachers, as well as the paras, were with us that day. And they look at MCAS data from 2023, our STAR reading data baseline, as well as end of the year on individual students, and that's in reading and math. And then the DESA test, we've done the baseline, which is sort of a reading on a social emotional wellness of students. And I will give a shout out to Assistant Superintendent Hanscom. She pulls together and makes it a very productive day, because she provides access to all of the information in an easy way for teachers and teacher teams to access it. From that analysis day is where teachers can then sort of inform their goal setting for this year, looking more particularly at the students that are in front of them, either individually for their class, or often it's done as a grade, so that we're very grateful that we had that particular day. In the packet, you do have the enrollment, my packet's messed up right now, but, so you have the enrollment at 1452 as of the 13th. Anyone have any questions on that page? If you do, I'll come back. In terms of personnel, it's a little bit of a quiet time right now. We are looking for three paraprofessionals, one actually at each school. One has been unfilled since, through the summer, that was a late resignation, and then two other people who have recently let us know that they were leaving, and so we are looking for those positions. You have A.D. Traveri's report there for fall sports, which I know there's still several weeks left of it. Next week, if you look at the scheduled events, I believe it's in your packet, but that is senior night practically every night of the week, I think, at different times for different teams. But it's always a great game to go to, because it is very emotional for students to recognize that the journey has come to an end often, and they've built a lot of great memories and had wonderful experiences. So you see some of his information there. You do have the report of our outreach coordinator, Consuelo Carroll, that you can read as well. You know, I do tend to give shout-outs to Consuelo quite often, but she has really done a great job with sort of creating a pop-up version of hashtag #WeAreMashpeeInTheSchool. And then she's just, today with SOF launching an online store or access to things that can be purchased, so that will be coming out very soon to everyone as well. And just her coordination of help for teachers and being sort of a conduit with community members who want to be connected to Mashpee. We did have a nice productive meeting with a newer member to the Mashpee community who wants to serve as a mentor to some of our, particularly juniors, as they start their journey of sort of post-high school decision-making. So he's going to be working with our senior sem, junior sem groups, I guess. We had our partnership meeting on the 3rd of October. I think you have in there sort of a summary of what we talked about. I did mention that Henry St. Julian, who is the DEI director for Falmouth, was there as well as their special education director, and that came out of the meeting that we had with the tribe with Falmouth a little bit earlier than that. And just their input into sort of that meeting was important and helpful, and seeing sort of where we've come from. Obviously, we have a long way to go and always have growth, but we have accomplished, I think, many good things over the last six years. We're now in year seven of the tribal, specific tribal partnership work. So you can see there are minutes connected, you can see the summary of all of the years. We are planning the activities for November, which is Native American Heritage Month. And at the middle high school level, it will not include performance-type education. It will be much more of history and culture presentations to smaller groups, roughly about 50 students at a time over a two-day period. At the elementary schools, it will include the cultural sort of assemblies that our younger kids have traditionally had with our native students participating, but it also includes some more focused classroom time for third grade as well. So we're very grateful to the members of the Education Department for their efforts to support that.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you discuss this resource guide? Because I know that's something that the partnership was working on for the last...
Right. So one of the to-do lists for a couple of years now has been creating a resource guide. We have our Mashpee version, which is here, which would be something that would go mostly to the members of the tribal education department to know who to connect with for whatever questions they might have. By school is the connections in here. And then we're hoping the tribe is working on their piece. And then particularly for, we'll probably keep this as a separate document, but we do want to create a combined document that's more specific to the partnership, so that our teachers know who to connect with before and in the process of planning for anything that is related to Native American education. We are lucky to, you know, live in a community that has experts, and so there really should not be any, you know, there's no excuse not to make sure that what you want to present or teach students is culturally accurate.
And that's, you're referring to the comments from...
Yes, that was, that was last year, an incident with a new teacher who basically went on, you know, Teachers Pay Teachers, which is not a site I prefer anyone to use. But anyway, well-intended, but missed the mark hugely in respect to verb tense that was used in the papers that were given to the native students. So that was a teachable moment for the entire staff, which is what was the directive to the principal at the time, to make sure that, one, recognizing that verb tense piece, but also reach out before you decide that this is something that you want to give a native student to find out and get, there's so many better things out there directly from the tribe. So that was sort of an unfortunate way to learn a lesson for all of us, so. Any questions on any? Let's see. So I guess next up is my goals and proposed goals for this school year. And I know further down, we have subcommittee working group updates. So the Superintendent Evaluation Committee did meet on October 2nd, which feels so long ago, but it really isn't that long ago. And we went over what, obviously, the first two pages of this packet are, is the plan for success. Year three, you can see the certain initiatives that the district leadership team has chosen, and some of the ones as well that the school committee is focusing on. And then from there, on page, I guess it's page four of my packet, but 18 of the big packet, you see the initiatives that we've identified to work on this year specifically. So that is considered a district improvement goal, and I would be responsible for being able to provide you evidence of implementation. What have we done this year to make sure that that initiative is in place? And every one of those is hopefully functioning well. Obviously, it is a four-year plan, so some of them will be on every year, but we have made progress. On page five of the mini-packet is my specific learning goal. So for school year 2324, in collaboration with district and school leaders, I will support the creation of school and classroom environments in which all students and staff are able to feel safe, supported, and connected. I will ensure that resources are allocated appropriately to support this goal. That goal, just as a reminder, started in the summer. It did start with the smaller district leadership team, based on looking at survey data. Then we had the larger leadership team of about, well, it was over 20, because it included our elementary instructional team leaders. That was a little bit of tweaking as well, and making sure that everybody understood and word choice, we went around and around with a lot of the different word choices. But from that particular goal, there are action steps down below that I have put in place. Building principles and also individual teachers can have action steps that look a little bit different to feed into that goal. But do you want me to read the action steps, or do you?
Does anyone?
Do you have any questions on the action steps that are listed there? That's for student learning. And then the last page of the packet is focused on professional practice. For school year 2324, in collaboration with district and school leaders, I will collect and analyze student participation data and expand district-wide systems to ensure all students, especially those from historically marginalized groups, can access the entire scope of opportunities and offerings. The teacher version of this, they may be picking a specific program, or it could be the new math program. For me, it's really important that this has been part of our plan for success for, obviously, all the years, but we have not actually dove into it the way that we will, and I want to make sure that that happens this year. We've already started. But as Dan said, we want to look at levels within a lot of the different categories. And I know that Victoria mentioned, you know, getting down to the elementary. I look at it and say, why are students from marginalized groups, why don't they see themselves as they enter Quashnet as being sort of leaders? Like, who ends up on student council? Who ends up choosing to be involved with K kids? And all of the things that we have for leadership. It starts with the messaging at an early age, and a lot of that messaging, I do think, coming from a student will be more impactful, getting, changing sort of their self-concepts, and then seeing how that follows along. But it does start by looking at, you know, who's doing what in what we currently offer, and what do we currently offer? I know we've pointed out in the past that, exclusive of Andrew, but it seems very low male representation in honor societies. I've asked that question a couple of years back with one of the advisors, and it was, well, they don't often turn the packets back in, that, you know, here's your application packet. Well, then we have to figure out how to change that, because girls, okay, they turn it in, that's not sort of a thing that a male learner necessarily values, but they should be in honor societies, they're qualified, and they've done the community service. So what barriers can we make sure aren't impeding somebody from participating? And that's just one small, teeny-tiny example of looking at how we do things, not just the what, it's how, and then, you know, reaching back out. You know, sometimes even when you're interacting with different families, you know, it's not enough to say, well, I sent them an email, they never answered me. Well, so as to a teacher, well, what else did you do? Did you call them? Did you send home something in writing in, you know, in an envelope? Like, you can't just stop because you hit the first wall with trying to sort of make a change. So anyway, that is the third, my third area of focus is that. And you can see from this sheet that had this little cover on it, but we, you know, starting to look at just simply the fall. These are co-curricular and athletic opportunities that are provided through the schools at no cost. We've tried to make sure transportation was not an issue for any of the students as well, whether it's a before-school or after-school activity. But a lot, I will also say, just pointing out, a lot of the, particularly at the middle high school, clubs and co-curriculars start with students. So this year, we have the Active Minds Club, which is all about student mental health, and it's traced to a young man who took his own life. But the, this group of proactive, I think there's 16 kids in that, on that group, have gone to every, you know, they've gone to sporting events and messaged what they wanted them to hear. The other, the ADL group, that group of trained peer leaders, has gone into every, I believe it's ninth-grade class or homeroom to talk about and teach students about the ISMs. And they've done all of that. There's just, I mean, I'm always impressed with the initial... There's, there's just, I mean, I'm always impressed with the initiatives of our students. You know, we have students who pray every day at the high school, and we've given them a space for that. We just try to make sure, same with food choices in the cafeteria. We want to make sure we honor what certain groups of students want, and it's tied to their culture. So there's a lot of little things going on. And I will say, oftentimes, they are tied to staff. Like, students need a staff member to embrace their, their idea and sort of run with it and support them. And that's sort of who we are. Immigration project started, has grown, become a legacy project. The Human Rights Club, they are very active in, in trying to sort of make not only the Mashpee folk schools better for all students, but the Mashpee community and really the larger world. But we all know it's challenging. But I, I do think we do offer a lot. We just need to make sure that the, the students at the youngest ages all the way through are getting the right messages from older peers as well as the adults in this building, in all of the buildings, to make sure that they see themselves as having unlimited potential. Yes?
I just have a comment about like getting kids from like the lower, not the lower grades, but like the Quashnet stuff. I was wondering if we could have like a program where we send mentors after school to similar clubs like robotics, go to Quashnet Robotics as like a role model?
Yeah. Absolutely. And we had several years back, we've had, I don't know if they call them big falcons, little falcons. There was a program, and I think it was Ms. Almeida, but the kids used to come from the high school to the Quashnet School, and they would be buddied up and provide support to kids that way. We have, I've said this before too, our students are our most underutilized resource. And we're stuck in this sort of structure and system that sometimes makes it hard to maximize the use of those resources.
Even going to the clubs, because the Coombe School has clubs too, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, getting, you know, if there's an art student who wants to help with that fact, with that staff member who, or faculty member who's heading that club up.
Yeah.
I guess from the outside, that is happening in all small subsets. So Mr. O'Murder is teaching across here at Quashnet, and he's bringing students from high school to the, to Quashnet to show them across. Also, down at the Coombe School, we had students from high school who were going over new programs. I'm not sure if it was through the schools or the after-school program. We had dancers go over.
It was, it was through the schools. Yeah.
We are trying to do the best we can, and we have the resources.
And I'll wait till we get to you. I have a question.
Under, anything, any other conversation before I switch? And we can go back to anything in this section, which I've probably lost my paper. But I wanted to, I have an email to re, I have two things to acknowledge. First, I wanted to acknowledge Brianna Johnson. She's grade 10 student at Mashpee Middle High School. She sang the National Anthem at the town meeting the other night, and she was fabulous and very grateful that, I don't know how people do that, that seems like such a scary thing. And there were 594 individuals there listening to her, but she did a fabulous job. The other thing I wanted to read was an email that I received. It was after the last meeting, and it's from Ally Donahue, Southeast Disaster Program Manager for the American Red Cross. And she said, hello, Mashpee administrators, I hope this email finds you well. My name is Ally Donahue, and I'm the local disaster program manager for the Red Cross in Southeast Mass. As the local DPM, which is what her acronym is, I am in charge of our preparedness and response programming for Bristol, Plymouth, Barnstable, Dukes, and Nantucket Counties. I'm writing this email to thank you for fostering a student body that supports service to your local community. Working with Ms. Purdy, Hannah Rogers, and Caroline Cotton, those are two students at Mashpee Middle High School, has been an absolute pleasure. Ms. Purdy has empowered these young women to be incredible community leaders at such a young age, and it's amazing to see. Last year, our response teams went to 139 incidents where people were displaced. Of those, 139, 96% were home fires. With that, we want to make sure that people have built skills in home fire protective actions to reduce the impact of emergencies on youth and their families. Last year, our goal was to present to 150 K to second graders, 365 third to sixth graders, and 165 people 12 years or older about disaster preparedness. The Mashpee Red Cross Club, which is a high school club, is the reason we were able to meet these goals, and I can't thank them enough. Your students are quite literally teaching life-saving skills to one of our most vulnerable populations, people under 17. Thank you again for all the support you provide to the club, and thank you to the Mashpee Red Cross Club for all of the work you do to ensure the safety of our community. And if you remember, they came and presented, and those students, and it's not just Hannah and Caroline, there's a larger group, came down and taught all of the sixth graders, and I think the fifth graders as well, with this Pillow Case Project, about how to be safe in your house and what to do in case of a fire. So I think that's just a great example of, of, of a club that is only there because they came and met with me a summer or two before and wanted to do that. I'm like, I think that sounds great. And again, finding someone who wants to support it, which Ms. Purdy supports many.
I do have a quick question, because I was contacted by a parent about sports opportunities as well. And I know sometimes those germinate from student interest.
Yeah.
I guess in this particular instance, it's a co-op thing that would be needed because of, or it might not be, and people just didn't know that we could make a specific team. But I guess I'm just curious, how, how can we ensure we're growing that and making sure that students who play certain sports are able to participate in sports that they have spent their childhood playing and would like to play at the high school level for potential growth and collegiate opportunities, I guess is.
So it does start with us approaching athletic director. I mean, that's, we ended up with volleyball because I, I mean, I'm saying, why do I read every other town on the Cape with their scores and there's no Mashpee? That has grown leaps and bounds. Last year, or it might have been the year before, I asked him to find out about a sailing team, because we live on Cape Cod and every surrounding district again. He did investigate. There was some hope of co-opping with Born, something didn't work out in the end. But we have kids who have been sailing since they were young, and we have kids who want to learn how to sail, and that's a perfect place to do it. We used to have co-op for girls' ice hockey with Born, Wareham, Old Rochester. It was like a big, long acronym. That co-op in itself, I believe, dissolved. I do think that there are female hockey players, ice hockey players. I believe communications were made to the athletic director last year, knowing that this was going to be an issue. I believe there was some conversation, although I think we missed an opportunity because a new co-op just formed for girls' ice hockey, which is Sandwich and Born and Carver. And Mashpee should have been part of that. And I think we're still looking into why Mashpee isn't part of that. It has to be approved by MIAA, and I think it was recently approved, but there's no reason we should not have been part of that. Also, in that conversation, finding out about ice hockey and talking to the Born superintendent, they are looking to co-op with Sandwich for sailing and swimming. And I said to the Sandwich superintendent, Mashpee's interested in co-opping too. We would like to be part of this. So I don't know, other than sort of being engaged with it myself and with our principal at the middle high school, where there's a miscommunication and how come it's not happening? But it should be happening. And so we co-op for gymnastics. Falmouth, last year, we were actually with Barnstable as well. Hockey, we've co-opted in the past. We need to make sure that sort of all of the offerings that are sort of acceptable, like wrestling, we could do, we could co-op with wrestling because surrounding towns have wrestling. We need all of those opportunities to be available to our kids.
I, I just, I feel it goes hand in hand with the clubs. You know, if we're gonna, if the students have interest and they're able to get these things going, you know, how do we support them? I guess is the bottom line.
Yeah.
Okay.
So may I ask?
Yeah, please.
So at the Coombe's level, where it's less likely to self-identify opportunities, how do we, what has been the channel for seeing growth for clubs at that school?
So the clubs at Coombe generally are teacher-driven, and I know we have Principal Brian over there as well. We once, we, we sort of put it out there, what would you like to offer? They answer back. We then sort of set up a signup. They decide what day and all that. We set up a way for parents to sign their kids up. We do generally have that we want 10 kids for a program to run. But it's very much driven by, you know, the employees of the school, what they'd like to offer. We have in the past had some outsiders at both schools. Like, we've had support with knitting at Quashnet, and, you know, it doesn't have to be an employee who offers a program through us. But that's pretty much how it's done. You know, I guess you could probably reach out to students to see if what they might be interested in. They, yes, we have two principals raising hands.
What is the opposite if you want to put aside to the co-op?
Yeah.
You don't have to do it tonight if you don't want to. If you want to maybe, I don't, I don't know, I just know we're kind of, I don't want to, 7:30, it's up to you. If you can summarize it quickly, I'm happy to hear.
Yeah, if you want to go to the mic though.
If you want to come to the mic though, just so that the public can hear, because I know there are parents who might.
Because we're lucky with Principal McSweeney, she has a very broad background of experience, not just as a building leader, but involvement with MIAA as well.
It's college day, so.
It's fine.
You might have to press this and hold it down until it turns blue.
It's the blue light on.
Did you hold it, hold it down a long time, though?
I think it died.
It might have died.
Oh.
I don't know if it might have died. With the co-ops, there's a couple of things that.
Consideration. If a school, say Sandwich High School is the host school, they decide whom is going to be allowed to host with them. So if you have two, three, four, five schools that apply, because they're the host school, it's at their discretion whom they accept in partnership for the program. The other piece is the MIAA side, which would say, I know this happens a lot out in Central Mass and Western Mass, there were co-ops with seven, eight, nine, 10 schools. And is your co-op becoming too large that you're becoming a powerhouse? The philosophy behind the co-ops is to have a co-op that programs can exist, but not that they can become like these powerhouses. So we can apply, express our interest with the host school, but the host school is the one whom decides that piece, if that makes sense.
And that application part, is there a timeline on that application? Are those put out to all the school athletic directors, I'm assuming?
Yep, there are timelines for any cooperative teams. They're generally approved by the league first. We're in the South Shore League for most of our competition, so it would be, it would be approved at that level. And at that point, then it goes to the state level, which is the MIAA. Thank you.
And can I ask you one thing? So if I were Sandwich and I decided I'm going to have a co-op ice hockey team for girls, does something go out to like all different schools to see who wants to co-op with us? How does that work?
I don't think an official flyer goes out, quite frankly. I believe it's a word of mouth. Off the record, they, today I was, was meeting with Mr. Tavere, and I work with the athletic director at Falmouth High School. And you mentioned wrestling. I think that's something that, that Athletic Director Tavere and Athletic Director Olivera of Falmouth are looking to do a co-op thing, not for this year, but for next year, because they have interest, but they just don't have the numbers independently to have it at each school. So, and both ADs are in favor of something like that. Again, that would be a next year thing, but it's really kind of a word of mouth thing, to be honest with you.
I guess my other question, though, is how do we get the student interest? You know, like, we need to collect that student interest, because if there are, you know, in this instance, the parent I spoke to, it's a female student who is a hockey player. And we did have a girls' hockey team at one point in time, and now there isn't one, and there is no opportunity. But how many other female hockey students? Because it wasn't even listed on the program. Like, is there a point in time, I guess? And we can have this discussion later.
Yeah. I mean, what I would do as a protocol, what I did as an AD, what I've done at former schools, is you have meetings at the end of the school year with the, with the eighth graders coming to the high school, all the sixth graders coming to junior high, see where your interest is, see where your numbers are, see where the interest is, and then you build from there.
Because I know when we were looking at the, into sailing, we sent out a Google form, and we ended up with about 20.
Yeah. No, I remember, we asked, we had a conversation about it. I do remember those conversations.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So I did those two things. Upcoming events, just in your packet, like I said, where is that? In here? Just as a reminder, a lot of the senior nights are listed there as well. Early release day is actually tomorrow and next week for conferences at the elementary level. If any of you have children, you might be at the elementary level, you'd be impacted by that. So I think there's just things that you can look at. I wouldn't say there's particularly things that I want to highlight, but I would look at that sheet and decide if there's, you'd want to go on. So that completes mine. I didn't know, though, if we, if, did we, did Andrew speak on his student advisory?
No, I'm sorry, we did skip.
Sorry. So I was just going to leak out a few.
Nope. My apologies.
Do you want me to just do that now?
Yeah. Where's yours?
So.
Here's my paper.
From our, what we've been doing at our meeting, I think we had two days ago. Sorry, it's been a long week.
Yes, it has.
We're getting, getting on to our goals. We're forming like, not really subcommittees, but like, not really, I don't know how to say this, but forming groups with school-wide student council to work on it, like in addition with them, just because, we don't really have enough people with vibes to do everything that we want to do. We're planning on hopefully getting our Mashpee Minute out, our debut next week, hopefully. I feel like a lot more members know of the purpose of our group with the packet that we got last year.
Yeah, I feel that was.
Last year's meeting.
I feel that was a good meeting.
That was a good meeting.
I feel like we, you know, for those, Matt and Dan, we did have a pretty successful meeting, I feel. Brian and Donna, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. Brian was gracious enough to zoom in for that, and I appreciate that very, very much. So thank you. But we were able to kind of go over the purpose and the goals, and they, I think, I hope, glad to hear they, you feel you have a better direction.
Other than that, like, I've been talking to just, I feel bad now, whenever I'm in the halls, I'm asking everyone, hey, I heard you. Because I think I'm still a bit, just trying to talk to everyone, really ask them what they think. I mean, I do know everyone wants their phone back. I've, and I've said this before, but a lot of people have been talking about the bells and announcements and stuff, but just figured I'd say what I heard.
That's what you're here for.
And that's about it. If you have any questions for me.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Ashley.
In your packet are the updated FY24 budget reports. I don't have any specific to point out in them, but do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ashley?
I think it's true.
I had one question. We are still deficient a after-school bus at the high school, correct? Any progress, prospects, ideas?
We've reached out to all of the transportation companies, WIBH, and no one's available to do an afternoon program for us at this point. I have been in talks with Collaborative about consolidating PM rates. The concern for me with that is the limited time students are on the bus, so we really need to weigh that out. If there is an opportunity, we will look at it. However, I can't guarantee anything. It's something that is top of mind with Collaborative. If they do have someone who can provide a driver for us, then we'll take them up on that. We've allocated funds to it for the year, so it is a priority. We just don't have the resources right now.
Okay. Thank you for keeping on that, because I do feel that that is an important bus to have access to for a lot of our students. And I wonder sometimes if that would increase student participation in some of the clubs. I'm not going to lie, I think having that ability to get home can sometimes be a hindrance, or not having the ability to get home after something like that. So, thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
The next part of that section is the FY25 budget, just to reference. I included the budget summary and also the CIP, the community management manager, at the end of September. It is a bit different from the last meeting. There will be changes that will be in the next meeting, and then going into January, we will have continuous conversations on the budget. My final piece of the agenda is just an update on the A track. We did an interview with three, up in the A's, three tracks will be done September 21st. Only two of them were able to come. We did choose a vendor, Miss Meyer, and Tommy. They were awarded the bid on 9/26, and they are going to be on site at E C Cooms tomorrow during Happy Day. Please look at it.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Subcommittee Working Group updates Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. I know Superintendent DeBoer kinda went over that. Do the members of that subcommittee want to add anything, share anything?
I don't have anything. No, I guess, I thought it was a wonderful meeting and looking forward to the next one.
Thank you. Negotiation Subcommittee, Unit B. We met recently. Anyone wanna start that update?
So, in terms of Unit B, do you really have a wish, a mutual agreement? And was it about it or not?
So the, the sort of MOA or MOU, whatever, the summary of the changes has went back and forth between Sarah, our attorney, and myself, final edits. And I believe she sent it to their rep today. So there was the Unit B one, there's two documents there. And then there's a Unit A MOA. Warning.
Assuming that they've successfully wrapped up the contracts and.
Yeah, so if, depending on the timing, we may or may not like call for a Zoom school committee meeting after the association has ratified for you to ratify, or else it would be just added as an executive session to the next meeting. I don't know, timing wise for them, so.
The Zoom would be an executive session though.
Yeah, the Zoom would be an executive too. I mean, you could go back to public and just say that you ratified, but yeah.
Any questions for that subcommittee? Thank you all for your work on those. Specifically unassigned, specifically assigned unfinished business. Our goals, we have the action steps here that our outreach working group put together. Pages 28, 29, and 30, I believe, are the action goals. And we have a vote on this item to accept.
Basically, it's the red text, if you all agree to what the outreach working group developed as sort of action steps or, not action steps, but.
I don't think, they are, they are action steps. Anybody have any questions for the working group on this? Oh yeah, that was waited out.
I think we only currently have Dawn's on this website. But you might wanna update yours, cause you have a whole new element to your world. But you don't have to be, you know, I know like it's very sensitive for some of you to put something up there. So, you know, you, if you went through the Mashpee schools, if you, any little snippets of that part of your world, you don't have to talk about what you do for work if you don't want to. I think I have pictures of all. I do intend to get a shot of five of you tonight to update on the website.
Today's the 18th. Can we say that we can get these to Sherry by the 31st or November 1st? Can we set that as a deadline? Does that work for everyone? Okay, November 1st. Cause that gives you about two, that gives you two weeks.
Oh yeah, we do have Dan, sorry, yes. We do have his. Sorry, Dan, you did a great job there and you met the deadline.
And he's Dan now, not Dawn?
Yeah, he's Dan.
Okay, just making sure. Sorry, Sherry, that was kinda funny. Okay. Any other questions on the action steps that the working group has come up with? I did have one question. Do we wanna assign these Zoom meetings? Do we wanna figure out who's gonna do what, which ones now? Since we have one in two weeks?
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, I think these are great topics. I think this covers what we discussed we wanted to cover. But I guess now it's the question of how are we divvying these up so that we all are equally, you know, participating?
I also wonder sometimes about the length, cause having done some Zoom meetings where they're not super well attended, and so you have a tendency to say, okay, we're gonna end. But then can you really end if someone thinks, I'm gonna hop in at 7:45 to ask a question? Like they, they couldn't get on earlier. So I, I mean, it's fine, you know.
They're gonna be recorded though, are they not?
Yep, we will record them.
Does anyone see what they want to do, I guess?
Sorry, question about recording. If it's gonna be folks asking questions, and I know it's an open format, but how are we publicizing that we're recording it? Would that deter folks from, if that's what they're asking?
I think you would have to state it at the beginning. And I think too, when we advertise, and this is just my thought, we would put out that if you would like to submit a question anonymously, email it and we can read it. You know, whoever's doing that one could just say, you know, we received this question, read it, answer it.
Well, because through the Zoom too, so you hit record at the beginning, it sends the notice to everyone. You can make the chat. I mean, if, I assume I'm on it and usually Hope would be on it. The chat can just go to someone, not everyone. So, and then it's, that's how we did a lot of our meetings. And then someone will say, okay, we have a question. Here's the question. You don't have to identify it as a person. I think recording it will be helpful though as a resource, because then, you know, we've obviously, based on the topic, we have captured something that can be informational.
And I mean, this is just the first, like, first year of it. This isn't to say that we'll have, you know, as the committee changes and grow, you know, and different people come in and out of this committee, this is hopefully something that will be lasting, so. And Andrew, you know, feel free, if you wanna jump on any of these too. You know, where you're a non-voting member, you could come to, you know, like we would have two of our voting members, but you're more than welcome to, or anyone on the student advisory committee too.
I can ask some of them if that one would be okay.
Yeah. So, I guess, does anyone see one that jumps out to them that they're like, I wanna talk about this, we'll start there.
So, Madam Chair, it sounds like we're getting two community members at each of these.
Yes.
So, I know somebody's out, but going on to see the contracts for next stage.
Okay.
They're gonna wait for it also.
Matt, alright, so April 8th is filled.
My thought process was, if the first one's gonna be more of like an introductory, kinda talking about what our role is as a school committee, maybe, it would be good for the chair, coming the vice chair to be there. Or if we also divvied it up by our respective policies of committees and so on and so forth. I know I also serve on the outreach committee, so I can do the 30th, the first one initially.
Okay, I can do the 30th as well, so.
Alright, so Kathy and Brian.
I do like the thought of that, of the subcommittees. That's a pretty good approach. So I guess that means Dawn, you and I would be on the 22nd with finance. So then we just need one more for the 10th reflection and planning forward. And that one might be hard to pick, because that would also be after the election. But if we wanna tentatively put someone in it, and we can pivot when we, or you know, cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, we could wait and assign the second member closer, you know, right after the May election.
Okay. Alright, is everyone okay with the current? So Brian and, myself and Brian will do the 30th. Dawn and myself will do the 22nd. Unless someone from the outreach committee would like, or subcommittee, or working group, rather, would like to be on that one, because that one also talks about the annual survey. Just putting that out there, but I'm fine doing it as well. Superintendent Evaluation and Election, Dan and Matt. Election, could someone, I guess elaborate on that? I did have a question on that, just how to run for school committee? What, what was the thought on election as the topic?
Well, I don't know if that's actually later than the time for.
It is. The papers have to be in by February usually.
Yeah.
So then maybe, should we switch the election to the annual survey?
Well, no, cause the annual survey always goes out at the end of February. And the budget, that those, everything is very time crunched. The evaluation, my thing matches with the 8th. I mean, you could, on the 8th, potentially talk about campaigning and the importance of, I mean, it's set, but it's not voted yet.
I'd like to stay away from campaigning. I think that gets into an ethical gray area. Well, not really gray area, it gets into an ethical issue. I mean, I'm fine talking about it. I guess I just was curious, cause that one did stick out a little bit. Okay, alright, so that's covered. Are there any other things on here that needed action and decisions tonight for us to vote and approve these action steps? I don't see any personally, but does anyone else see anything they would like to point out or discuss?
I just had a question on the student evaluation, because the school evaluation happens after that.
I think it's just talking about the process. It's, this is a info, yeah, this is trying to educate the community about, so that's one of the things you do, so you can talk sort of from the start of a meeting in October through the process that way. Maybe you wanna add one in here of the student advisory committee as a topic too. I mean, cause that would be informative for the public.
That one should be useful to do that in April, because don't they have to have the air?
They have to have their election in June, yes. Yep.
So, that would be the last time you'd have an opportunity.
So instead of election, we could put student advisory committee.
Although I do like, I have to say, I like that this does capture the election process. I do think there are lots of community members who don't understand how to run for school committee, or how to start that process. Yeah.
Or what if that was part of October too? Just because if you talk about the role of the school committee, like you can.
I think that's a little early, well, yeah, actually, I mean, I guess you could.
Like how, how you become a school committee member?
Yeah. Okay. If everyone, how does everyone else feel about that?
If you guys feel that that ties in, like.
No, that's okay.
It does, it's how you got to where you are. Okay, so the election goes there?
Yes. And then student advisory committee. So Andrew, guess what? April 8th.
Do you want, I can grab some other people too.
Again, you guys, the student advisory committee can go to any of our subcommittee meetings, working group meetings, or these types of events. You are always welcome, because you are an advisory committee, so, alright.
I'll have more people on April 8th.
Okay.
It'd be great to have more voices.
Oh, very good. Yeah. Talk about their experience on it, what they've learned, what they've done. Yeah, definitely. Okay.
So, just one last question. So, is the student group set for a one-hour duration? Is that correct?
That was the plan.
Is there an expectation that the people on those days are going to present something? Or is this just a Q and A?
I would think there would be some opportunity for the two members to talk. Cause if it's just a Q and A, there could be a lot of dead silence, because they don't know what to ask necessarily. So there would be sort of, I mean, we could, we can support you in that, in terms of giving you sort of a.
A few graphics.
A cheat sheet and some gra, yeah, we'll give some, we'll work on slides and that.
But I do agree with you, like, dead space.
Optimism, Tom, optimism. Well, I mean, on the 22nd can be used as an opportunity to talk about. You will have voted, you would have just voted on the budget, so for FY25. But you can use that as an opportunity to talk through the process and what we're looking at for 25.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the school committee goals, action steps.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the school committee goal for year 2023, 2024, action steps as presented with the others.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any further discussion? Dan, how do you vote? Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Policy BEDH, this is the third read public comment at school committee meetings. Pages 31 and 32. Hearing none, yeah, sorry.
So, just following up on that conversation from earlier in the year, looking at this with the, at the, with the, um, I guess I'm open to how people would interpret it, yes, and whether they feel that this is appropriate.
Yeah.
One thought that comes to mind immediately is for, this is some of the experience in here as well, folks who might be not be familiar with English, having more time to express themselves, seems to be, seems to be a little bit more supportive than the three-minute timeframe. And also looking at public comment overall, you might be pointing a longer time period, coupled by the fact that we know that this would be effective as a meeting, opposed to the, for childcare related issues, that makes sense as well. We don't get kind of kicked to the bottom of the agenda and have to wait around if we're someone who has track agreements. So those are just two thoughts that I can remind and, we're just, we're looking at that. I mean, for myself, just the fact that the chair made for me the extension of this time limit, and it's due to the circumstances, I can help with that as well.
Any other questions or comments? I appreciate you bringing that up, Dawn, you know, making sure we are looking at this, you know, in light of our discussions tonight and how we do wanna keep moving forward with these policy changes and updates. You know, I think historically, we don't usually see people have the second one. And I think, you know, condensing it to one, perhaps if we were still in hybrid mode, we might wanna consider keeping it, because then you might get the parents who could log in, but where we no longer offer the hybrid option for that. I guess that's, that's the only thought that's coming to mind for me right now. You know, we can, we can leave it as is too. And there's nothing that says we have to pass these changes. But we did kinda go through the work and just to kinda see what it would look like. So again, I will leave it to the committee, entertain a motion to approve BEDH public comment at school committee meetings as edited here. If someone would like to do that. If no motion, then.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, Dan? Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay, thank you. New business. In our packets, we have the upcoming MAS-C joint conference coming up in November, which is kinda hitting on the first two points here. At that conference, they will have the resolutions that MAS-C will present to the Massachusetts Legislature. It looks like this year there are eight resolutions. Hopefully you had a chance to read through them. Some of them are things that have been on before or in some iteration. Some of them are new. I think one of interest for me as I was reading through these was the MCAS resolution. I found that one interesting. There is a resolution on diversity, equity, and inclusion in here as well. There is a resolution on diversity, equity, and inclusion in here as well, but typically at this meeting, every school committee tries to send a delegate to vote, and be a voice at that resolutions meeting, to approve what MAS-C presents in terms of resolutions to the legislature. First, what we need to do is go through these and vote on our position as a school committee on each of the resolutions, so that the representative we then will elect is able to then vote as the representative voice of this body. So, that being said, I guess, do we want to read through these? Should we just read the title, you know, what do you, what do you guys, what would you like to happen? I mean, I'm assuming everyone's read through them, but do we just want to go resolution by resolution and take the votes, and then start there?
How we've done in the past, if anyone needs time or.
Yep, okay. All right, so Resolution 1, Full Stable Funding for Metco. Any questions on that? And I'm not sure, we do need motions to support, so, before we vote, so, if someone wanted to make a motion, either way. Okay, hearing none. I guess we do not support Resolution 1. Okay, Resolution 2, Regarding Investigations and Recommendations for Transportation Bidding Procedures. So, this is addressing the problem of transportation services and bidding and purchasing of these services, which I personally feel is something Mashpee is impacted by, so.
I make a motion to support this one, yeah, especially with a lot of the evidence they were giving of how the bidding process has been going, and they're getting multiple possible people to bid, but not, there was only one company coming out to actually provide information, which, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we need a second? Thank you. Any further discussion on Resolution 2? And Andrew, again, if you have any thoughts on these, chime in.
Yes.
Hearing none, Dan? Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, full support for Resolution 2. Resolution 3, Regional Transportation. Again, not necessarily something that impacts us, but there are regional districts on CAVE as well, so entertain a motion to support Resolution 3 for Regional Transportation. Basically saying that the Commonwealth will reimburse districts for their transportation costs. Okay. Hearing no motion. That one is not supported. Okay, Resolution 4, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. This is, that MASC will recommend that all districts adopt the position of DEI Coordinator to work toward an anti-racist school system.
I'm making a motion.
Okay. No motion, we need a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? And don't forget, too, if you saw something that needed the mending, we are able to mend them if needed.
Yeah, we've done it in the past.
We have. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, Dan?
I will, yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay. Resolution 5, Mass. School Building Authority. This one basically calls upon the legislature to amend Mass. General Law, Chapter 70B, Section 7, by removing the $800 million cap, and reinstate the Accelerated Repair Program, which was suspended during COVID, I believe, and then allow public preschools to be included in the Accelerated Repair Program and Core Program. Again, not necessarily something that impacts Mashpee, whereas we do not necessarily work with the School Building Authority because of our unique situation with the town and our building and facility maintenance, but entertain a motion to support Resolution 5. Hearing none. Great. Resolution 6, School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement of Penalties. I believe this one is to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video direction monitoring systems to enforce violations, you know, people who pass school buses, basically, and the penalties thereof, you know, and making sure that those are enacted.
Essentially, like, what I was reading through this one, is that if someone happens to pass a bus, and it's, like, putting a, like, potential student, like, at risk, a police officer actually has to visibly see that happen for that to be, like, enforced.
Currently, yes.
Yeah, so, like, this is the force that, that video system would create the evidence that would then be, allow the law to be enforced, yeah, and I've seen some videos, and it's just scary to think that, you know, that's happening, and maybe that would deter people from passing the bus if they knew, even if there's not a police officer that saw it, like, it's captured, you know?
I would like to say, when I rode the bus, it happened a lot.
Yeah.
I've heard from friends and peers, that it does happen a lot.
Yeah, even in our community, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I'd make a motion.
All right, we have a motion? Thank you, any further discussion? Matt, I'm sorry, Dan?
I will, yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay. Resolution 7, Related to MCAS, this one, I think, will be an interesting one for whoever ends up being the delegate to sit and listen to this conversation, but basically, MAS-C will be urging Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders, launch comprehensive evaluation to investigate the extent of biases pertaining to MCAS testing, and publicize those results, ask legislature to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately, and urge Massachusetts to develop an alternate to the high-stakes MCAS tests. And you can hear the students across the Commonwealth cheering in advance, so. Anyone want to, anyone want to put this one forward as a motion?
You'll be here, I know.
Again, this is not binding, this is just to determine whether or not the lead, the mass, MAS-C, MCA, MCA, I'm looking at MCAS, and it's the same letters backwards, sorry. MAS-C, they're, they're the lobbying, they're, they're basically our lobbying organization, so, think of it that way, but doesn't necessarily bind us to anything, I just would say that we support this in Mashpee as well.
One conversation.
Yes.
So, this is just looking at identifying any inequities in the process, and also looking at alternative measures for the testing that could be better fit for student population?
My understanding is that there have been questions of biases in the test itself as well, and results, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the way questions are written, they, they're not really taking all test takers into account. I think it also includes urging the moratorium, and just from my perspective of all the years we've had, when it started, and it was, like, grade four, grade eight, grade 10, like, maybe it's reasonable to narrow in on two different grade levels for testing, but now it's become this, you know, third, grade three, all the way through eighth, and then pop in 10th, it's just too much for kids, I think, for, they could get measures.
That and what we're measuring, or how we're measuring.
Also, the MCAS is just that snapshot, it's not, in terms of assessments, it's not necessarily measuring any real growth, whereas, you know, you take something like the STAR assessments, where they are actually measuring a baseline, a midpoint, and an endpoint, and you're actually able to monitor growth, and see student achievement improve, find areas of deficits to work on. MCAS does not provide that at all. It's that one day, and you don't know what kind of day that kid's having, the day they get up in the morning, to take that test, so.
Which, as a reminder, I didn't reinforce that, but all of the individual test results were mailed home today for 2023 to families. It was publicized in my communication, but thinking about what you're saying, like, they're going home today.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
And I don't know that it's always an accurate representation of what, like, efforts teachers are making and all that, because, like, the, the way that I've heard feedback from teachers sometimes, that, like, they, they can have a child that is excelling, or made leaps and bounds, and then that, they have that test, and then, like, you know, it's almost like they're moralizing to the students, because they're like, I thought I was doing good, you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah.
So, entertain a motion to support Resolution 7.
I'll make another.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone want to second it?
No second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Dan? Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay, Resolution 8, Safe Storage of Firearms. This one, I believe.
It's down at the bottom.
Yep, no, got it. Urge Superintendents and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians, so basically increasing firearm safety and storage through our communications, so. Are we in favor of communicating firearm safety to our families? Thank you, Dan. Second? Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Dan?
I will, yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay, so, just to recap, we take no stand on Resolution 1, or 1, 3, or 5, and we support Resolutions 2, 4, 6, 7, and 8. Okay. Now, I know I am going, is anyone else registered for the conference?
Yeah, I'm still trying to pick a poll.
Okay. Okay. We do need to vote at this meeting, I believe, unless we call an executive session to vote, once you determine, because if, I, I mean, I don't know that they're doing this virtually. So, the resolutions, I don't believe they're allowing for virtual participation on this. This is on Wednesday, I believe, is the meeting, for this, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, Resolutions Clinic is at 2:30, Delegate Assembly is at 3:15 on Wednesday, the 8th. So. Would the board, or would the committee like to postpone this particular vote, and have a Zoom vote, once we can determine if anyone else is going, or do, what are the thoughts of the committee?
I'm still comfortable with, I have a Dan, myself, you have authority, could, and I personally feel that you have more knowledge than I have, so.
It isn't that bad, it's kind of like town meeting, but for school committee. And people get up, and they make their, their passionate pleas for these resolutions, and amendments get made, and, like I said, it's like town meeting, but school committee.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the one that we're invited to, too?
If you would like to, yes.
Yeah, so you need to let Mrs. Vanitsky know, if any.
No, I'll ask, like, tomorrow.
Okay, ask tomorrow, very good.
So, it sounds like we have a nomination, but again, if you want to defer, I'm fine, I've done it the last two, three years, three years? Yes. This would be my, I did it COVID here, I've done it, I think, the last at least two, maybe three years, I'm trying to remember, but I'm drawing a blank, so, if anyone else would like a stab at it, I'm fine relinquishing that, but if not, I, I will do it. I just want to give someone else an opportunity, if they are interested.
I mean, I was going to nominate Dan, but if, you know, for you, I'm going to either, like, so.
Okay. Then I accept that nomination, I guess, and then, do we need to vote on that? I believe we do. So, any? So, is that, Dan, do you want to make that an official motion, then?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to nominate.
To a point.
Sorry. Got, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you for your confidence in me, I guess I'll say. Dan, how do you vote?
I will, yes.
Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I abstain, but thank you. Okay, we kind of touched on it, but the joint conference is coming up, November 8th, to, I think that's.
That should only be the 10th.
That should be the 10th.
That's a really long conference.
That would be a very long conference. So, the packet does have the listing of the workshops, so feel free to, kind of, take a look and see what's coming. The NSBA, since we're on the topic of conference, NSBA 2023 Annual Conference will be held in New Orleans this year, April 6th to the 8th. If you are interested in going, Sherry can get you registered. I haven't, they do have the pre-workshop conferences, and I'm totally drawing a blank on what they are, but on that Friday, if you wanted to go down a day early and do some of the pre-conference workshops, sometimes those are very interesting to participate in, and I know Brian and I in San Diego discovered Monday is a little boring, so if you don't want to stay, if you don't, if you want to go home on Sunday and not go to Monday, no one will judge it, because we just kind of stood there, like, okay, now what? So, we did get some exciting in, I think. All right. MMH Programming, Dawn, you're up.
So, I wanted to have this, to the agenda, to get this up at Student Advisory Committee Meeting the other day, to request that the community, the political program committee, amended to look at various programs that we have at the high school, to determine, you know, what programs we want to have going forward, and what supports we have to have, whether you want to put resources, both from a human resource, and from a financial resource perspective, ultimately, you know, what is it that we want the national high school to be in the future, and I don't envision this being a quick answer, and I think this will take a while to figure out, and acquire input, all of the stakeholders in our community, and so, I want to try to get the ball rolling on this process. I also reflect upon the fact that, you know, we have a limited number of faculty currently, and we are very dependent upon individuals to be able to teach certain things, and if we lose one key person, we lose a program, and so, it is that we want all the support. And so, I think the Subcommittee is at the appropriate place to invest that energy to oversee that process, working with the superintendent and support, so, I would request that we put that handy to the Subcommittee, of which I believe it's not necessary. Any questions?
Would we be able to provide our input to you as well, on our thoughts, or are you thinking?
You are a stakeholder.
Yeah, yes, we are.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure, just want to, so, you're proposing you, you would start the process by looking at what's currently there. currently there, come back to the committee as a group and kind of discuss what your findings were first and then open the discussion, like, because I'm, I'm assuming this is going to take a couple of meetings to kind of dig into and get our teeth into, correct?
I expect that this is not a short process.
No, no.
So similar to other subcommittees, I would expect that there will be frequent updates provided. The committee as a whole needs to provide additional direction. It's going to be similar to any other subcommittee.
Okay. Any thoughts? Anyone have any questions or thoughts on that? All right. Let's, let's see what the Curriculum Subcommittee has to say. Looking forward to hearing about that. Yes, no, sorry, Andrew, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Students can be, like, not students, but like.
Yeah, yes, yep. So if you guys, when they start meeting, we'll make sure that you, you as the, the chair will get most likely the email invite, but if somebody else wants to come to that?
We're trying to, like, since we had the meeting last week, I want to try and get some people in our little thing, like, focused on researching that. So we'll have some, like, data and, like, students, let's test them.
Well, I'm going to say it right now, music, art.
Yeah.
Music. I'll say it again, one more time, music, art. Huh? And drama, yes, but music.
Well, we talked to, like, the Curriculum Subcommittee, can meet at a few desks.
Yeah.
Bring in students for that.
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good luck on your endeavors. Can't wait to hear more. Okay. We talked about the school committee quarterly drop-in Zoom meeting. That's all set. Huh? Sorry? Yep, we got that all set. Student Advisory Committee meeting dates. We did discover that we had a pretty big conflict on the next, was it the December meeting? Yes, I believe that's what we talked about, was moving the December meeting to the 6th. So we, we had our first meeting on the 11th, which we kind of ran, we, we developed the agenda. The next one will be a jointly developed agenda with the Student Advisory Committee and the School Committee. So again, if you have things that you would like discussed at that meeting, you know, please get those in so we can develop that agenda together on both sides. And then I guess what we need to decide as the school committee, do these remaining one, two, three, four meetings work for everyone's schedule? Again, knowing the May 29th one is after the election, but.
Yeah, the only ones, the only thing I know is that the second Tuesday is always the, yeah, collaborative, so whenever they land on that, I just can't be present.
Which is understandable.
Yeah.
And I know.
No, I want to be there.
No, I know, I know. And I know Dan also has a new conflict, but I think these, looking at the conflicts and I think looking at Brian's dates as well, this worked. We did check this with the dates that Brian sent us well, did we? Not, we did? Yeah, so. So that being said, do we want to move the December 13th to the 6th and accept the remaining dates?
Yeah. I like that it goes up.
And these worked?
Yeah, it worked, yeah.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept these dates for the joint meetings of the School Committee and Student Advisory Committee? Thank you, Brian. Second? Thank you, Matt. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Yes.
Dawn? Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. All right, thank you. And last but by no means least, items the chair did not reasonably know in advance. Anybody have anything that we need to put on a future agenda, discuss, look at? Okay, hearing nothing. Anyone for this, for a public comment? Okay. Thank you all for sticking this out. It is 8:25. We have dispensed with the agenda. Our meeting is adjourned.